Team to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of...
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. Today, we need to do some rearranging. I would like to request that on the consent calendar, I'm going to read number nine before I read number eight. And I need to request that we move item 14F up before 14A.
Did you say you were going to remove item six?
I will do that when I read the consent calendar, sir.
Yeah, okay. And I'm requesting that we move item 15 up in place of 13 and move 13 down to item 15. Are there any other changes to the agenda? One other item, and that is, I would say, a personal privilege that we would do before we do the consent calendar.
Yes, sir.
And circumstances are such that Commissioner Davis may have to leave early. And in that respect, we've... Holly and I have agreed to move a little ceremony up to the front of the meeting and to the end of the meeting. We have Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Holloway who are moving into a life of leisure. And as a result of that, we think it would be appropriate that we send them something with them to remember their service to the community.
Now, why would you want to give a guy a clock when he's retiring?
And thank them for their years of service.
Chair, this is much appreciated. It's been absolutely a thrill and an honor to represent the people of Pennington County for over 20 years. And I should say, most people in Pennington County. It's been an honor. And but I can't say much more than that. It's just been great. Thanks a lot. And I really appreciate the dedication of the Pennington County employees and the department heads. You've done a fantastic job over those years, and I don't think anybody can say any different. Thank you.
Well, I'd just say thanks as well. It's been a great ride.
That's all?
That's it.
He's saving up for the last meeting.
We certainly thank you, and we expect you to come back periodically at least.
All right. I'll come in to complain about my taxes.
There you go. Next item is the consent agenda.
We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent calendar contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2014. Approval of the vouchers, and I'm going to pull those off here in a moment. Approval of the lease agreement for rooms at the Pier Remota Hotel for the 2015 legislative session. Number nine is approval of the alcoholic beverage license transfer from the Grizzly Pub and Grill to the St. Patrick LLC doing business as the Rim Rock Event Center as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number eight is approval of the alcoholic beverage license renewals for Big Horn Crossing, Silver Dollar Saloon, and St. Patrick LLC doing business as the Rim Rock Event Center as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number 10 is approval of the chairman's signature on the transfer agreement for a trailer to North Hare's Volunteer Fire Department as submitted by Emergency Management. Number 11 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2014 as submitted by Human Resources. And number 12 is approval of the letter commenting on the endangered species status for the northern long-eared bat as submitted by Weed and Pest. And at this time, I'd like to request to remove number six of the vouchers.
Number six has been requested to be removed from the vouchers or from the consent calendar. Are there any other changes? Does anyone wish anything else removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number six.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Item number six, I just wanted, for full public notice, we're requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve vouchers in the amount of $1,590,675.70. That number is different because we added in our utilities that are due on Friday and a contract payment that was submitted late. I just make a request to approve the vouchers in that amount.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion is second to approve vouchers in the amount of $1,590,675.70. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next item is item 15, the Rushmore Regional Rail Authority. Appointment of Representatives and Election of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair. Before we get too far into this, I would like to expedite things just a little bit, and I'll tender my resignation from the Railroad Board since I'm leaving the county commission. And what happens after that is up to you folks. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to accept that resignation? Jay?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. That'd be fine. That's probably good for the record. And then today, as you received my packet, that the county commission would need to appoint a replacement representative. And if you would be willing to do that today, if you have in mind who you would like as a replacement representative, that would also be a second motion.
I'd make a motion to accept Commissioner Davis's resignation from the Rushmore Regional Railroad Authority.
We have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Since I think Commissioner Troutman is Ken Davis's alternate, I would recommend that she gets appointed to that commission. That's my motion, in fact.
Second.
We have a motion is second to replace Commissioner Davis with Commissioner Troutman.
If I may, what you're doing is you're selecting a representative, not a commissioner. So remember, the representatives are appointed by the bodies, and then those representatives will meet later and actually elect commissioners. So today, your motion would be to appoint Commissioner Troutman as the Pennington County Representative to the Rushmore Regional Railroad Authority.
That's what you said, wasn't it?
I'm sure it was.
I think that's what I seconded, anyway.
You okay, Karen? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further remarks? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jay, while you're here, could you comment at all relative to the next step for the rail authority?
First of all, I guess I'd like to let you know that I just received from the Secretary of State the certificate of incorporation. So the Rushmore Regional Railroad Authority is now official. It's a public body. And as far as the next step goes, the representatives will have to get together. That'd be yourself and Commissioner Troutman. With the other representatives, as you recall, a while ago where they got together and elected the commissioners, they'll have to get together again in January and select a new commissioner for Pennington County to sit on that railroad commission.
And who is... What comprises the rail authority?
It's five commissioners. I'm trying to think. Mayor Quaker is on that. The mayor of Wall and Box Elder are on that, and two commissioners from Pennington County are on that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we all scored away, then as far as...
We are, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're about two minutes away from the 9:15 time period for items from the auditor. And if you can talk for two minutes.
Take a lap around the room.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Julie Pearson, E-A-R-S-O-N, Pennington County Auditor.
You're doing well.
Here to serve you with your year-end reserve motions and supplements. Is that good enough?
You're doing pretty good. I think we're...
I'll read slow. I believe we moved the year-end reserve motions to before the supplements. Is that correct? Thank you. Just a bookkeeping thing to keep the auditors happy. Motions are needed at the end of each year to adjust balances for the long-term reserves that we are now properly budgeting for. We want them done prior to December 31st of each year so they don't get lost in the year-end cash reserve balances. There are two motions needed for this year. The financial software conversion is completed. All contract awards have been satisfied, and I've absorbed all this year's expenses within my current budget and with negotiations on that contract for modules not purchased that we originally thought we needed. This will increase your cash reserves at the year end. The motion needed is to transfer the assigned financial software reserve balance of $100,000 to the unassigned fund balance as the project is completed, which means we won't need that. And the reason it increases your reserves is because we pull that out before we calculate your year-end reserves.
Do you want that motion before you go on with the next?
Yes, please.
What's your wish?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to transfer the assigned financial software reserve balance of $100,000 to unassigned fund balance as the project is completed.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Any questions from anyone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Also, IT budgeted a long-term equipment reserve amount of $20,000 that needs to be added to their long-term reserve. Since this was a budgeted within the IT 2014 budget, it will not affect cash reserve balances. Motion needed is to transfer the long-term IT equipment budgeted reserve of $20,000 to the assigned IT equipment reserve.
That would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. Is our IT man here? Okay. It's just, have you got plans for the $20,000, or are we just storing up some money for future use?
IT Officer Russ Tinsfold. We are storing it up for future use. I think there was, I want to say about $36,000 in that fund right now. And so the idea is, we add $20,000 a year to it because we know that some of our main systems need replacement every five to seven years, and those big systems are plus or minus $150,000. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next is our annual year-end supplements. I've broken them down differently this year so that you can tell how they affect your cash reserves. Number one, these are revenue-supported supplements, which means they have no cash reserve effect. It means that we have brought in an income or a revenue to support an unexpected expense. The first one, or excuse me, the only one is that... No, there is two included in the motion. To supplement the general fund election budget in the amount of $213,471, and the weed budget in the amount of $15,000 from non-budgeted revenues received in 2014.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve as presented by the auditor.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the motion for item one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two.
Item two is reduction to cash reserve supplements. This will reduce your cash reserves, and I've included that information in the heading. There are requests for budget supplements due to shortfalls that will reduce the unassigned cash fund balance. If approved, the general fund reserves are estimated on 12/31/2014 at 20.51% and at 12/31/2015 at 16.58%, which is $761,353.83 less than your 18% goal that we projected during budgeting. Motion to supplement the general fund court-appointed attorney budget in the amount of $346,088. The jail medical budget in the amount of $170,000. The planning budget in the amount of $17,500. And the operating transfer to the fair fund budget, and you need to include in the amount of $29,100, all of these in the general fund.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, if there's overcollected revenues and underspent budgets at the end of 2014, then your percentage of what's going to be in reserves, would that percentage would change?
Yes. The reserve amounts are the same as during budgeting time, which are very, very conservative. But this just shows you, so you have an equal comparison, basically why I didn't think you should reduce your reserves to 18%.
Yeah.
But yes, we just don't know what they are at this point.
Right. But the fact of the matter is, it's not going to be that. It's going to be something more than that.
It will be more than that, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I see our presiding judge is here, and I couldn't hardly let him go by without, are we going to continue the $346,000 shortage in appointed attorney funds? I mean, that seems like an awful lot.
Jeff Davis, Circuit Court. I was tempted to sleep in this morning, Commissioner Bouskoud, but I thought I'd better come down and take my medicine. As you know, throughout the year, the Public Defender's Office, Mr. Witcher has presented his statistics to you and the overload in the office. So this is not throwing him under the bus, but directly attributed, I think there's about 350 cases that they have stepped off of this year. And that's roughly $1,000 a case when it goes outside. So this accounts for that, as I pointed out to you in my November 12th letter.
Okay, I forgot about that, but yeah. I, we figured that was going to come.
Right.
If I may. If the board would recall when I presented financial reports, this is also a budget that was overdrawn at the end of last year, wasn't it, almost $200,000?
Correct.
About $200,000. So you must seriously think about that budget when you're budgeting for 2016 and have that basic discussion with our public defender, Mr. Witcher, to determine if he's going to have... If the additional staff has taken up some of that load, and if some, how much of that, and get that budget back up to where, not back up, but up to where it is coming in. These are very difficult amounts to project. And if you recall in Judge Davis's letter, it is a high estimate because we don't want an overdrawn budget. It makes a note in our financials as well as our audit, which is what our bond rating is based off of. So it is high, and we're hoping it's a good figure.
Thank you, Judge.
Concurrently with that, Commissioner, I know from talking with Director Witcher that since November 17th, they've stepped off. I think they've accepted all cases since the 17th. So there is kind of a leveling effect there, and it should carry out through the year. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Karen, do you have that motion with the dollar figure on the fair fund? Did we have a motion on this item?
I don't think we did. Mr. Chair, I would make the motion as stated in the file here.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three.
These are net zero to cash reserve supplements. Both of these supplement requests will reduce unassigned fund balance, but because of a cash influx from general fund and unspent budget in a wrong line item, there will be no net decrease in cash reserves. This affects the county fair budget as well as the E-911 fund budget. To supplement the county fair fund debt service budget for $29,100 from unassigned fund balance due to newly approved operating transfer received from county general fund, and to supplement the E-911 fund debt service budget for $80,000 from unassigned fund balance due to unspent E-911 2014 budgeted in a wrong line item.
That would be my motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? And a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four.
Item four, this is the bond reissue supplements, net zero to cash reserves because we reissued one of our bonds during 2014, which we have bond proceeds which went into reserves, which will pay for these supplements. That's why it's a zero to cash reserves. The motion needed is to supplement the accumulated building fund debt service budget for $3,469,310 from bond proceeds.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is second to approve item four. Any discussion? Now, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The last is a capital projects fund supplement from cash reserves. This basically doesn't affect cash reserves because this is where we do all of our building projects expenditures from. And so because we don't budget for that during a normal budgeting cycle, we just move the money in from the bond proceeds and/or accumulated building, depending upon the funding for the projects. The 2014 expenses for the capital project budget, again, was not budgeted in 2014. To properly account for the expenses, a supplement from the bond proceeds received in 2010 needs to be recorded. This fund is only a flow-through fund, so cash balance is always netted to zero at the end of the year. To supplement the capital projects fund project budget, excuse me, to supplement the capital projects fund project administration for $5,000, parking structure for $18,200, administrative building for $8,600,000, courthouse for remodel for $15,000, energy plant for $150,000, and the evidence building for $376,000 from assigned fund balance in the capital projects fund. These are high estimates so that, again, we can end the year with at least a positive balance.
Any questions? Comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented by the auditor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Let me check just a second. Sorry, thought I was short of motion. I think that deals with everything.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Julie, thanks for separating it that way. I mean, I think it made it clear for everybody, you know.
Oh, yeah.
I think that was a good thing for everyone.
Just one other comment. What, you know, just so the public doesn't think that we're crazy right here at the end of the year during the supplement all these budgets. What we had set up, or with your assistance, was to hold all of these supplements until the last meeting so that we could just transfer the actual needed dollars rather than the estimates that would have come to play months ago, knowing that this stuff was going to be coming due.
Yes, it allows the department heads to work within their budget for the, up to 12 months, to absorb expenses, so we don't have to supplement or take so much out of reserves.
In years past, we used to do supplements throughout the year. Every time somebody had something extra, they'd come up. And then at the end of the year, they would have money left over in their budget. This eliminates that.
This eliminates a lot of that. So it gets us a truer picture of what our budgeted amount should be as well of our expenditures.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay, thank you. Now, we go back to item 13. And this is the Big Sky and Rapid Valley subdivisions and Rapid Valley unclaimed roads. And here the screen coming down, and you'll be able to see the roads in the area. I'm sure there are quite a number of people here who have a vested interest in this topic. And I know that our office, Holly, has fielded a number of calls, inquiries, and individually, we commissioners, at least some of us, have also gotten calls. The hope is to clarify relationships today and possibly end up with equipping the folks that live in this area with a sense of direction in terms of what they want to do or what they don't want to do. But I've found in several cases that when there are questions about government responsibility and with the layers of government that we do have, people get confused, and we've solved some problems by bringing together all of the entities that might have a role to play, organizing a process that allows communication and clarification to the extent that the best solutions can be reached. Probably never reached the point where everybody's happy and has their own... Probably never reached the point where everybody's happy and has their own wish about things, but at this point, I would think, hope that this has gone on long enough that, that we would be ready to start to solidify some things and move forward. We're going to invite you folks to the podium. Those of you who wish to speak, please identify yourself when you begin. And as we go along, it would be beneficial, I think, if we listen to who's speaking. And if you have something to say different, that's fine, but to repeatedly review a particular point of view would not necessarily be productive. In order to establish a baseline for discussion, I'm going to call on our highway superintendent, Tom Wilsey, to discuss the position of the county relative to these roads. Would you do that, please?
Tom Wilsey from the highway department. If you don't mind, I would like to call Mark Ford. He's got the history and I can't speak real well today.
Good morning. Mark Schach, Pennington County Highway Department. As you can see, Tom's voice isn't working very well today, so I have a.
Is that a blessing?
I've got just a short overview here, I believe, on what we have discussed the last two weeks in these subdivisions or this area of Rapid Valley. Let's see here. We've been discussing road maintenance and snow removal in the Big Sky subdivision, which is the blue area on our map, on the, towards the left-hand side, and the Valley Ridge subdivision, which is the yellow area on the right-hand side of the map. These areas are not on the county highway system, and they are not in the city limits of Rapid City. The purple area on the top part of the map is the Rapid City, City Limits. The white area on the bottom and the red highlighted roads are maintained by the county highway department. Big Sky subdivision was developed in the late nineties with the homeowners association formed around June eleventh, nineteen ninety-eight. The association dissolved sometime after October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven. This left the development with no raid, road maintenance or snow removal. Big Sky subdivision was within the three, is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of Rapid City. The subdivision was approved and inspected by the city of Rapid City when built. There has been ongoing litigation between the city and the developer for many years over the failure of the roads, and it's my understanding that final decision may not happen anytime soon. Now, the Valley Ridge subdivision, again, the yellow area, was developed in, or around two thousand and one by the same developer. The same developer that big, built Big Sky subdivision. It was also approved and inspected by the city of Rapid City. Our records show that there was a maintenance agreement drawn up for the Valley Ridge subdivision for road maintenance and snow removal by the developer. And, and that agreement was to be in place until a homeowners association or a road district was formed for the, for the subdivision. It's my understanding that a homeowners association was formed but dissolved at some time later. I'm, I'm not sure of those dates. On the other hand, Tintin Lane, which is on the far right side in the yellow area, the, the highlight or the hash marked area, Tintin Lane formed a road district, May fifteenth, two thousand and seven. The rail, road district maintains and performs snow removal on Tintin Lane itself or the, the hash marked area on the east side. Big Sky subdivision and Valley Rub, Valley Ridge subdivision, other than Tintin Lane area, currently have no road maintenance or snow removal. Of course, Pennington County Highway Department regularly receives requests for snow removal, stop sign replacement and repair. We also get requests for road and asphalt repairs in these areas. We get requests very regularly for the notorious, their monster pothole, I'll call it, near the intersections of De Geest and Avenue A on the, the west side of the Big Sky subdivision. We've also received requests for damage repairs from owners of vehicles that have hit these potholes or manholes in the past. A recent one was for about nineteen hundred dollars, damage to a vehicle. In the past, the county highway department has opened a hole through the area after major blizzards when it's completely impassable. We have also sanded in severe ice situations when it was deemed very dangerous there. It's, it's a rather hilly area and can become very dangerous with, without snow removal or ice treatment. We have done this, like I said, after severe blizzards and severe ice situations for the access of emergency vehicles. And this has been done at the verbal request of commissioners. We have done no patching, and we have done no street repairs in these areas. I guess what the, the county highway department would like to request is some written guidance, maybe from the commission as a whole, on how we should proceed on requests in the future as far as road maintenance and snow removal. Since these areas, this area is not on the county highway system, we're doing that uncomfortably without written direction. So at some time after hearing from the people here in the city and see what direction this is going, maybe you could let us know then, or give us something that we can pass on to people in this area when they call for requests on this, this maintenance, you know, they, they, we get the argument that they do pay county taxes and therefore we should be, the county should be patching their road. Of course, we can't patch all roads in Pennington County. That money is spent on roads to and from market, to and from school, to and from work, and all the major, the other major roads. It's, all roads in Pennington County are not on the highway system. And I think we've been doing a good job of that here these last few years in ensuring that road districts are formed in these subdivisions to, to make sure the roads are maintained in the proper fashion and, and the burden not put on the taxpayers as a whole. I guess that's all I have for right now, unless you have questions.
I have a question. Do you know approximately how many road districts are established in Pennington County?
Oh, that's very hard to keep track of. The auditor's office is actually in charge of those. Do you have a number by ten?
Over a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty? Over a hundred and thirty. They're at it all the time. It's, it's a hard number to keep, keep track of. Once or twice a month, it seems like there's another road district formed, but, which is good, which is, is a good thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Mark, I believe that you mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, that the subdivision was approved in the three-mile limit by the city of Rapid City. Am I correct to that?
Yes.
They're the ones that set up the, the road, uh, construction, and they're the ones that inspected the road construction after it was constructed. Is that correct?
They approved the plating of the subdivision, the city of Rapid City did, and my understanding is provided, yes, the inspectors for the road projects, the road building.
And if I remember, Heiney saying over the years that, if I can quote him correctly, that he told the city that those roads were not up to par when they were first built, as I remember.
I believe you're correct, Ken.
That, therefore, we wound up with the roads that we have. And so the city and the developer are in litigation over certain parts of this. Am I correct on that?
Yes, on the Big Sky subdivision. I'm not sure about the Valley Ridge.
Okay. Just to clarify a few things for the public, so, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Terry, are you comfortable addressing the group, please?
Good morning, commissioners. Terry Walsh Storff, Public Works Director for Rapid City. Just add to a few things that Mark just addressed with you guys. I want to make sure that, I make sure you guys are clear on the approval process and the, the mechanisms that are in place in this three-mile area as you consider, I guess I would say, the level of service that you're going to provide to the citizens out here. First of all, the, the main purpose for the city's review of the subdivisions in the three-mile area is that we acknowledge the fact that at some point in the future, we will probably absorb those areas into the city through annexation process, and we want to make sure that the infrastructure in place meets or exceeds our standards. It's the primary purpose that we do the review. That's the same reason that the county reviews subdivision plans outside the three-mile area. Keep in mind that your county staff also review and sign off on those subdivision plans within the three-mile area. Those, those infrastructure plans meet or exceed.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you. I'm not sure how they, well, they are.
Sorry for that. Those subdivision plans always meet or exceed the county standards, whether they're, if they're in the, the three-mile area. Keep in mind as well that for years now, I would say, since I believe the early nineties, the city has had a policy that if a subdivision is contiguous to the city limits, we require annexation as part of that plat approval. The Big Sky subdivision and the Valley Ridge subdivision were not contiguous to the city of Rapid City at the time they were approved. That's why they have not been annexed. But again, keep in mind that the subdivision improvements out there, the original plans did meet or exceed the county standards. Now, we acknowledge that the initial construction that took place did not meet the standards that we, the county, or the residents out there expect, and hence we have been in a lawsuit with the developer for years now, and it's realistically, could be a couple years before that all plays out. Whether or not we receive money back from the developer, we're not certain of that. We, as a city, have gone in and done improvements and repair work to the streets that are in the city limits in that Big Sky subdivision. We completed those this fall, and we have set aside money to make repairs to the roadways in the Big Sky subdivision if those areas annex. We did have a meeting with the homeowners this summer, did present that information to them. We've set aside, I believe, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars for those repairs in the Big Sky subdivision. We, we to date have not had a discussion with any residents in the Valley Ridge subdivision. Main reason we haven't had discussions is because those roads are, are in good shape. They were, they were constructed the way they should have been constructed. So really, I think you guys have two issues you're dealing with. One is the issue of the, really, the substandard construction that took place ten years ago and how those repairs are going to be made. But I don't know that that will answer your long-term question of the maintenance of the roadways, snow removal, long-term maintenance, rehabilitation work on those asphalt roads. Obviously, if they're in the city limits, we will certainly maintain them. We would welcome this area into the city limits. We did present that information to them. I will tell you this, Mayor Quaker has made it very clear to me that he is not in support of a forcible annexation. We believe that it's up to the residents out there. We just recently annexed over, over two hundred homes out in the Countryside North Development. They had some infrastructure compliance problems. We've worked out annexation agreements with them, and we just recently annexed them into the city. So we're agreeable to doing annexation. Forcible annexation is, is really a last alternative and, and really not something that we're, we're interested in pursuing at this time. I think that probably handles everything from my end. If you got any specific questions now or afterwards, I'll be available.
Any questions?
What, 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 what's, what's it take for a voluntary annexation?
We need seventy-five percent of the registered voters and seventy-five percent of the assessed value.
Thirty-five percent of the registered voters and what?
And seventy-five percent of the assessed value of the, of the properties. To date, we've only received signature, signatures from about thirty percent, so we're far short of that. And keep in mind, we're, we've only pursued the Big Sky subdivision. We have not had discussions with the Valley Ridge subdivision.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask a question that's just driving me crazy. Why did, it, it seems odd to me that you kind of didn't annex where the homes are here. You annexed just really kind of to the right of way. Why was that?
No, we, we did not annex the right of way or the homes adjacent to the right of way. So that section of De Geest Drive and all the homes at front on De Geest Drive are not in the city limits of Rapid City. Now, I, and I don't know the history behind how that happened, if that had anything to do with the construction that had occurred at the time. Again, keep in mind, this, my, my guess is that the area around it, when that area subdivided and platted, it was contiguous to the city, so we required the annexation. Again, at the time when the Big Sky development and the Valley Ridge development were approved, they were not contiguous to the city. So we, we didn't have the option to require annexation. It, it's contiguous now, but at the time it was approved, it was not. That area to the north had not been developed yet.
Okay, any other questions? Does anyone from the audience have a question for Terry? Sir, come up and identify yourself, please.
My name is Chris Hargans, and I live on Aurora Drive. I was at the meeting where Terry asked that we would voluntarily annex. He said they have money set aside. I would ask that they spend it in good faith. I think that, I think that that's the right thing to do, and then any comments I go might not be just directed at him, but at the county commission as well. So if you want me to readdress my other questions, I'll sit down.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else?
Okay, before, before we get to next one, can, could you answer his questions about if you got the money set aside, why don't you just spend it?
I sure will. We, we are precluded from spending city tax dollars outside of city limits on road improvements, and that's why we, we've set the money aside and earmarked it for a project, but we are not able to spend the money until the annexation takes place.
Can, can you give that money to the county? We'll spend it for you.
No, no, but we'll, we'll gladly give over any money we get out of the developer. How about that?
Hi, I'm Aaron Lillbo, and I live on Hanson Lane in the Big Sky subdivision. My question for you would be, as far as our road goes, if we were to annex in, how would the road be fixed? Because the way that the rest of the roads were fixed will not work on Hanson Lane.
Maybe I should just stay up here. And I don't, were you on Hanson Lane?
Yes.
All right. Actually, the level of repairs are from one extreme to the other in, in this particular Big Sky subdivision. Hanson Lane is essentially going to be a total, almost a total reconstruction. A lot of the curb may be able to be salvaged, but the roadway itself is going to be, it's going to be major undercut and reworked subsoils, total asphalt reconstruction. So this Hanson Lane is, Hanson Lane and De Geest are the extremes of the, of the roads out there.
Anyone else, sir?
Yeah, I'm here a little bit more about the history.
Yeah, I'm here a little bit more about the history of Valley Ridge.
What's your name, sir?
John Hill. I'm the president of Tintin Lane Road District. I'm the president of the Valley Ridge Homeowners Association for, we call ourselves, Valley Ridge One. Part of the history out there is, when these homes were built, we moved in in 1999. We started our homeowners association, and we're just Tintin Lane. Rest of it wasn't built yet. We had three separate covenances for that one street. The first six homes was under one covenant, then halfway up the street was under another covenant, the rest of the street was the third covenant. We combined all of our covenances into one. We had to redo the covenants thing and submit that. We had to get the homeowners to sign off on it. We became our own homeowners association at that time for that street. When they made the rest of Valley Ridge, we didn't encompass them because they had another covenant. They, the developer had come up with another covenant for the rest of Valley Ridge, and we're like, we're not going to deal with that. We have enough problems with our own, and our dues were set at $10 a month. Well, at $10 a month per individual, you can see, you can do a little bit of snow removal, you're not going to fix streets, especially when you start talking about De Geest and them. There's no way. So, we had checked with Heine a few times about becoming a road district, and at that time, we were told we couldn't do it because that money that we were paying in to unimproved road tax went to the county to maintain Avenue A, or, I mean, Reservoir Road and roads like that. So, we were told at that time we couldn't do it. We found out later on, when some of the developments farther down had become road districts, that we could, in fact, become a road district. So, we did that. And what we do now is, when we were doing the $10 a month fees for the homeowners association, we actually had to put, threatened to put liens on homes, trying to get that $10 a month from people. You wouldn't think it'd be very much, but it is difficult getting. And I was under the understanding, at that time, Big Sky had theirs going in, and they were only paying $5 a month. Well, $5 a month, you can realize, they're never going to fix a road. There's no way, and they could barely do their plowing. Our road district that we do, we plow our own street, we bought our own snow plow pickup, and we have volunteers that drive the pickup. That's how we keep our street clean. The rest of Valley Ridge sometimes has contacted us, wanting us to clean their roads, but we always tell them, "Your Valley Ridge Two," is what we call them, "and your homeowners association's supposed to be taking care of that." So, we have been to meetings with the city before. It's probably been 10 years ago with Mayor Shaw at the time, when they were trying to annex us into the city at that time. That was turned down at that time because De Geest hadn't really gotten real bad yet, like it is now. It's terrible. But at that time, we were asking the question, "What's the city going to give us? Why should we become a part of the city?" Especially when they told us, and our current mayor was at the meeting, and he kind of agreed with us, they were going to give us city protection, police protection, but they were not going to do our roads, they were not going to remove snow, because our covenant said we were required to take care of that. So, at that time, when the city tried to annex us, they said, "Nope, the streets are yours. You're going to maintain them, you're going to plow them. So, why become part of the city?" We told them no at that time. Now, this time, we weren't introduced, we weren't invited to this last meeting, I guess, when the city tried to take control of Tintin Lane and Valley Ridge and Big Sky. Now, I think there's people out there that they want the streets fixed. Valley Ridge, our streets are pretty, are pretty good, but Big Sky's streets are, a lot of them are terrible. There's probably people that would do that now, if the city is, in fact, going to move the snow and maintain the streets. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more people. Now, my son and my daughter-in-law live in Big Sky. They got 30% of the people to vote for annexation. Nobody ever knocked on their door. So, I'm sure there's a lot of people within that subdivision who have never been contacted. So, there's probably more than 30% out there willing, if they can get their streets fixed and the snow removed, to become a part of the city. But somebody's got to take the effort to go and knock on their doors and speak to them, and tell them what the city's offering, what they're going to do, if they are, in fact, going to fix the streets, if they are, in fact, going to remove the snow, because they told us they weren't doing that before. So, we've heard different sides at different times, so. You got any questions for me?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did I understand you right? You're, you're the chairman of the, of the, of all of Valley Ridge, or just the Tintin?
Just Tintin Lane. We call ourselves Valley Ridge One. They have a separate covenant for-
Do they have, do they have a homeowners association in their area?
My knowledge, they do not, because they've contacted me about snow removal before, and I said, "You need to talk to your president," and they said, "We don't have."
Don't have one.
So, to my knowledge, there is not, the rest of Valley Ridge does not have a homeowners association.
Okay. And do you know if, since you have, you said a son or a daughter that lives over in Big Sky?
Correct.
Do they have a homeowners association?
No, they're, they're here. My son's right there.
Thank you, sir.
Cody, you can come up and address whatever questions they might have. He also lives on Hanson, so.
Cody Hill, I live on Hanson Lane. The street is deteriorated right in front of our driveway. I went to the city meeting, or the development meeting in August that the city held, and basically, what I kind of got from a lot of people in the neighborhood is that they don't understand why the only requirement is for us to get our streets fixed is to be annexed into the city, when it sounds like the city allowed these streets to be built to such a sub, a poor standard. Yeah. From what I understand, the contractor was even aware that these plans were not appropriate for the soil in the area, because the water table is so high, there's natural springs in the area. They notified the city, from what I understand, and told them that the planning was not adequate for the soil and water in the area, and the city told them to still continue as planned. And now, here we are, many years later, being told that it's like the only way to get this dealt with is to annex into the city, when the city was the one that actually allowed these streets to be built to this poor standard. And that's what I think a lot of the people in the development are struggling with, as to like why we are being held responsible, and the city isn't accepting responsibility, and Doyle Estes obviously isn't being pressured to, to deal with this lawsuit.
I, I think, at least what I heard from the gentleman from the city, was that the city can't spend the city money outside of the city limits. I mean, you're kind of in a catch-22 with it.
But they allowed it. They inspected it.
Yeah, it's a catch-22. They built it by their standards, but yet, they're not responsible for their standards. It, I talked to one of the foremen that was working on Avenue A, or Reservoir Road this past year, and he was a foreman for one of the companies when they were building those roads. And he told me, he says, "We told them, these roads aren't going to hold up to their, to what they specified, because there's too much groundwater, and we let them know, and they said, 'Continue on as we're going.'" So, there was, apparently, there was some knowledge there that these roads may not hold up. So, there is some blame there. I mean, Doyle Estes, I think even Doyle Estes is coming back saying, you know, "We built it to the standards that were set," and maybe they did. I don't know. It's, you know, we're not inspected, we don't know. But that's what I think part of his argument is. He did it to the specifications they were given. Well, it appears that some of those specifications should have been upgraded to make that work. And if you notice, it's not just the streets. If you drive up De Geest, you'll see driveways where people's driveways have dropped six, nine inches going into their garages. They're just, that's all collapsing up there. So, it's not just the street, it's that entire development. I believe there was basement walls that cracked like crazy up there. There's a lot of people who get a lot of groundwater in their basements, they got their sump pumps, and I've heard a lot of those sump pumps run constantly. So, apparently, the inspection process that took place up there, it wasn't up to par to make sure everything got done that should have been done. It was like it was a rush thing, and bam, there was a lot of money made, and then, "Thank you very much, we're out of here." So, but my street, the street I live on is an excellent street. We, we don't have a lot of problems, but a lot of those others do.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Anyone else out in the audience that wishes to address this?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, well, at least, you know, at least coming up, I remember Heine saying over the years that he had told the city that these roads were not up to the standards that the county required, and that because of the compaction of the soil and the drainage, as I remember. And so, there, I think, was a notification to the city by way back, before they started building those roads, that he didn't think that they were the right compaction and the right drainage to, to maintain good quality roads.
But that's probably what the lawsuit's all about.
Well, it is. I think it's part of it, and, but that's just between the city and the developer, and as I remember, Heine said that we were going to stay out of it, or he wanted to stay out of it until they were done with the city, and then, then maybe it was our turn, but...
Sure.
John White, I live on Zebok in the Valley Ridge. For the 12 years we've lived out there, since 2002, we've had numerous people come in and plow those roads, but when we first moved out there, we were told within five years we'd be put into the city. Of course, that didn't happen, because some of the roads had fallen apart in Big Sky, but not in Valley Ridge. Well, for first five, well, three years, we had a contractor in there plowing our snow, which was a developer, realtor at the time, who lived on De Geest. Of course, when the money ran out, we didn't get anybody. Then the city came in and plowed us for two years, because the county was plowing Red Rock for the city, and the county commissioner that we had at the time from Wall said he didn't want the city in the county, so we did without snow removal. And that, that area in there is kind of rough, because we do get quite a bit of the wind. Now, Zebok has been added into the city limits, two houses away from us, and the traffic now going back and forth to that school, and a new middle school, is tremendous on Zebok, because they don't like climbing those two hills on South Pitch and Avenue A, because they're too slick. But now, we're getting more and more traffic out there. Yeah, I'd love to be put into the city. We get some extra things, because the county hasn't done a thing for us in all the years, other than on an emergency, come in and get rid of some of the snow. But, you know, if we were told, and my wife was told when she bought the home, that we'd be put in the city within five years, because of the house loans that were out there in that subdivision. But just like this fellow up there on Tintin, that's Area One, there's five areas in Valley Ridge, five different sections, and we have never, repeat, never, and I got another neighbor here, and he moved in the same time I did, never been approached about homeowners association, and my wife was never told either. And she has now passed away, but at the same time, we have never been told. And on our part of the street, out of the nine homes that are there, there's only three of us who live there since they were built. Everybody else has moved in or out two or three times, so, you know. But we've never been asked by the city to come on in. They always talk about Big Sky, never about Valley Ridge, and we're at the lower part of that hill, so. But it's, you know, I'd like to see something done.
Well, from what this gentleman from the city said, if you can get 70, what is it, 70 or 75?
70%, yeah. 70%.
70% of the people out there to sign a petition, saying you want to be annexed, you'd probably, that'd probably happen.
Yeah, 70% if, you know, but half these people, yes, you did send out a letter. But look at the people that it's here. If you did this on a night, you might get some more folks from, you know, there's a lot of people out there that do work, and they're schoolteachers and everything else. They can't come to these meetings. If you probably did this at night, you'd probably get some more folks in on this.
But probably what it's going to take, and I don't know what the city, if they sign a petition, does that work with the city? If they made out a petition?
Yeah, we, we just require a petition of annexation.
Well, speaking from a guy that's run for election several times, if you get a petition and start walking up and down the streets, you can gather the signatures, and that's, somebody's going to have to take that initiative. I think one of the gentlemen already mentioned that. Somebody's going to have to take the initiative out there to do it.
If somebody would have known about this, true, just like your last meeting that you just had, and all of a sudden, we got a letter two days later, saying, "Hey, we're talking about this." None of us out here in the county knew anything about it.
Yeah.
We never got told.
But sir, that's why we, that's why we sent the letter out, that's why we started this whole conversation, was to try to get people to understand what it is that they need to do if they want to get annexed, and what the benefits are of getting annexed.
Yeah, I understand, because I've talked to Patsy numerous times, because I worked for the city at the time. All these subdivisions out there, yeah, we inspected them, because I worked for the traffic division, unknown to this gentleman right here. All those signs and everything else were put in and out there with the city's standards, yes. I know what went on out there, yeah. So, I mean, you were the sheriff at the time, and Mr. Buskeru sitting over there, I worked with his son for many years too, but, you know, yeah, we know what's going on, but at the same time, we like to be, find out, you know, but nothing, whenever it gets said about Valley Ridge, it was always Big Sky, and we're in a different subdivision. So, thanks.
You just got bigger potholes than you.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. Bigger holes.
Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Scott Holter. I live on Zebok Street, closer to Avenue A. We just moved in within, last year, almost, almost a year and a half now, and when I bought the property and was going through the mortgage documents and everything, I'm in the area that the previous gentleman called Valley Ridge Two. We were told that there was absolutely no homeowners association, nor has ever been one, and I guess, as, as a citizen of Valley Ridge Two, my question becomes, it ultimately comes down to dollars and cents, and what's better for, for the property I own as a resident? I understand that those subdivisions were built to be eventually brought in to the city limits, but it doesn't sound like that's going to happen as soon as some people thought it would. Also, when I bought the property I own as a counterpoint to the gentleman who is just up here, we were never told that we would be annexed into the city within a certain limit of time, and to be completely honest with the commissioners, I'm not sure, as a resident of Valley Ridge Two, that I want to belong to the city limits. Comes with a lot of ties to it, and code enforcement, and taxes and whatnot, drainage fees, all of that, that Rapid City is subjected to. My question, I guess, for both the city and the gentleman who is up here, who is president of the Valley Ridge One Housing Authority, is how much would our property taxes go up if we were to voluntarily join the city? And number two, is it cheaper to maybe offer to join, if the president of the housing authority would allow us in Valley Ridge Two to join their housing association and pay $10 a month for snow removal, maintenance, and that sort of thing? I mean, I know they're not going to fix the roads, but as he said, Valley Ridge Two doesn't have a lot of road problems. There's just no snow maintenance there. Personally, I would rather pay $10 a month on a housing association for the roads to be maintained than to join the city. That's just my own feelings on it.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, just, I just want to make one comment to this gentleman. You know, part of it is that the people that live out there need to look at the long, long-range picture, because granted, those roads in Valley Ridge might be in pretty good shape now.
True.
But unless you're putting quite a little money away in the bank, it costs a lot to dig up a road and resurface it.
Yeah. Okay, some of the questions that he's brought up. Okay, some of the questions that he's brought up. The Tintin Lane Road District, the money that we get in is, was the money that used to go to our unimproved road tax. We now collect that money ourselves. And we can change that amount if we would like to make it larger or smaller, but we stayed with the standard that the county gets. It's easier to do it that way. And the dues, the homeowners association dues, ours were not set. I believe Big Skies were set at $5 within their covenants. 90% of the people who have bought homes out there, especially those who have come later on and bought homes later, don't even know there's a covenants out there for those buildings. And like I said, we had three covenants on our street. And then, I think the rest of Valley Ridge may have only had one, I'm not sure. I used to have copies of all of those. But they did specify in there that a homeowners association would be started after X number of homes were built. That didn't happen. And it didn't even happen on our street. We probably had, it said six, we probably had 10, 12, something like that. And one of the gentlemen on our street forced our hand, threatened to sue everybody because the covenant said this. So, we did get ours started. The others have not gotten theirs started. But even if they started road districts out there now, it would probably take care of the snow removal. They'd have to hire somebody come in and remove the snow. And like I said, we volunteer, we bought our own pickup and plow. But the amount that you get from the taxes for that unimproved road tax, that is not gonna fix these streets. It's not even gonna come close. I think I looked at it the other day, and it would take 42 years of everybody's road district tax to go into that, to pay for that $800,000 they're talking about to repair that.
And the road's probably gonna be in pretty bad shape in 42 years.
I would think so. So, if those roads are gonna get fixed, we're gonna have to either join the city, or Doyle Estes is gonna have to pay his lawsuit, or it's not gonna happen by people paying a little bit more in taxes or homeowners dues. It's not gonna fix it.
Okay. We had a couple gentlemen over here that...
Well, they're coming up. Julie, there's one gentleman who want to know how much more taxes would be if they came in the city. Do you have that percentage in the back of your head? Because you figure all those.
Or the front? In front of your head or in the back? Either one?
Here's the deal. If the win a development, regardless of where it is outside city limits, right now, Pennington County has the rule, if you will, that they have to form a road district. That's because of problems like this. I'm surprised that Valley Ridge, in the year it was formed, does not already was forced to form a road district if it was in the early 2000s. If you're in a road district, you pay, you have to be outside a municipality. And the only levy that you do not pay when you're in a road district is the unorganized road levy. And right now, that is 1.185 per thousand of value. It goes away. In place of the unorganized road levy that goes to the Pennington County, which has to be spent on very specific types of roads, that goes away. The road district board of trustees determines itself, it's a three-member board, how much they're going to levy to support the roads in their district. That board also determines the level of maintenance, the level of snow removal, and any repairs that are done to that road, just like the county commissioners order our highway department to do. The reason we have over 130 road districts is because homeowners association dues do not work. Reason they don't work is they're not required to be paid. There's a lot of work that you have to go through if you're a homeowners association to get those to be paid. If they're not paid, which then the homeowners association, if it so chooses, has to go through the effort of filing a lien in the registered deeds office against the property, which then it just simply accumulates and is only paid when the property is sold. Usually, the homeowners dues are not ever set large enough to do the maintenance for the roads. These people's choices out in that area, if they want something done on their roads and they do not, and are not taken on by Pennington County because they do not meet our standards, they either have to annex into the city and have those tax dollars pay for that, or they have to form their own road district and tax themselves, which is what 130-some areas have already done within Pennington County because Pennington County does not have enough money to maintain all the streets. There are more streets being maintained in the Rapid Valley area by county tax dollars than in the other areas where the majority of your road districts are, which are up in the hills. And the reason for that is most of the roads were built not reasonably width to fit our equipment through. So, there's a reason we got to this point.
Do you know what the city's levy is?
Not off the top of my head, it's, it's, uh-uh. It's close to what the county is.
3.361.
3.361.
And if they come into the city, then they wouldn't, and if they're in the city paying that 3.361, they won't pay the 1.185 unorganized road?
Correct. They will not pay the Rapid Valley fire.
And how much is that levy?
That I don't know. Do you have that on?
I mean, that's what the gentleman...
That's probably 1.6. Then there is the Valley Sewer, depending upon the agreement, Rapid City would come. I know the yellow area is served by Valley Sewer. They can continue to pay that if they're not on, and which I understand they're on Valley Sewer, so that one would not go away. The library tax would go away, which is 1. something.
So...
It's almost an even Steven.
Is it?
A little bit more if they are brought into city limits than if they do not. If the Valley Sewer limit goes away, they will pay probably less than they're paying now.
I don't believe that it moves the city property taxes, though.
Yes, that's the 3 point mill.
Okay. Sir?
My name is Scott Wiley. I live on Hanson Lane. And I was also at the August meeting that the city presented to the Big Sky subdivision regarding annexation and the possibility of it. I volunteered to run petitions. And so, I did knock on most people's doors on De Geese, South Pitch, Hanson Avenue, A, Aurora, and Carl. And I was having a hard time finding people at home and so forth. So, I wrote up my own letter, put their petition in there along with all the information the city had provided, gave my two cents worth, and stuck it in all the doors that were remaining. And so, this is the first I had heard that there was about 30% return. My, in regard to what was just talked about, and in that letter, based on what the city had charted out the differences in levies and so forth, I had determined, based on the value of my home, that the difference for me and my house was going to be about $120 a year. That we would be paying more because we pay so much in garbage, garbage pickup, I should say. And others perhaps don't pay as much as we do. But, and so, it was coming out to about $10 a month for us. And then, that would accomplish getting the roads fixed. It would accomplish having our lights turned on on the road. We would have the snow removal and the de-icing or the sanding. We would have probably duplicates, my understanding, fire protection and police protection. I, and perhaps this is addressed to my neighbors more than to the commissioners, I don't really understand the hesitancy to be annexed into the city. It feels like an axe to grind against the city for failing to inspect properly back in the day, but it's not going to cost us that much more. And in the long run, I think we're going to pay it anyway. I just think it's better to get these roads fixed before we start losing our vehicles in holes and things like that. And so, that's basically all I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Certainly.
Good morning. My name is Jim Chastain. I'm a resident at 5409 Avenue A. I am in the Valley Ridge subdivision, right next to the Tintin Road District. I am the sole owner of that house. We built, we had it built. We've been the ones that have lived there the whole time. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the highway department because they do come out and plow Avenue A from end to end. They do come out and sand Avenue A from end to end. Few years back, I'm not sure who did it because it happened one day while I was at work, someone came in and did work around the manhole covers, putting in some patch and some fill and other stuff. Since I got the notice about this meeting, I started driving around the neighborhood and looking, and Avenue A is the only street that has had this done. That would lead me to believe that the county has, county highway department may have come in and taken care of that. One point I would like to make against the highway department is that in their presentation today, the gentleman did fail to mention that they are plowing Avenue A, sanding Avenue A. They are also having their street sweepers come in and run the sweepers up and down Avenue A. Looks like highway maintenance to me. I feel I am getting way more than my $195 I pay every year in taxes, and I greatly appreciate all that. My personal feeling is that Valley Ridge should be brought into either the county highway district or the city. Our roads out there have become thoroughfares for residents in the county-maintained areas to get to schools, stores, other highways, into the city, out of the city. We have become thoroughfares for those areas, therefore, we deserve to be brought into either the county highway system or within the city. It doesn't matter to me either way. I'm happy either way. But if we feel that having us come under the jurisdiction of the city would be best, I would be one of the people who'd be happy to go around, knock on doors, and get petitions signed. Because it's not gonna happen by anybody in this room, as far as elected officials going around and doing it, it's gonna take one of us to come out and do it. We just need some direction, some guidance. What has happened in the roads in the past is in the past, we all need to press forward and come up with a reasonable solution to not only deal with the snow removal issues, but get the roads fixed as well. So, that is what I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep.
Okay, now, we're gonna let Mark clarify your Avenue A thing because I've heard him say something before.
Yes, on Avenue A, I did not, I failed to mention this morning that we had been doing some snow removal on it. We talked about that in one of the previous meetings here. I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but I do have a copy of a letter that was from Heine, the former highway superintendent, to Gabe Olson, Big Sky Homeowners Association. This was discussed before, and the highway department was told by the commission that we would plow, would be able to plow Avenue A just because of the fact we come up from the south on De Geese Street, Aurora Street, Pennington Street. And I thought there's another one there, too. Sweep right over there to the side. But our plows come up from the north, plowing snow on the county-maintained roads. And they get up to Avenue A to turn around. We haven't lifted our plows at the subdivision line because those are lot lines that'd be just lifting in the middle of the street. We have gone up to Avenue A, turned the plows around, and come back down to get the rest of the streets. In that process, sometimes it leaves large piles of snow out in the road. So, it was agreed that our trucks would main, or would remove snow on Avenue A just to alleviate the dangers that were left by our snow plows. I really shouldn't say anything, but I have seen those piles on South Pitch left from plows coming from the north. It's not a good thing. So, that is the reasoning why Avenue A has been plowed in the past. And De Geese was on a snow agreement with the city. As mentioned, you know, we do have a snow agreement with the city on snow exchanges. De Geese has been on that for a while. It has taken off this year because the situation was becoming out of hand here. We need answers, we need direction. And so, I just want to make aware to the residents that do live on De Geese, that do live on Avenue A, there will not be county plows at this time until we're directed otherwise by the commission.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I ask just one question about this?
Yes.
Is there gonna be an official notice sent out to those residents on Avenue A and De Geese letting us know that we are not gonna get the county plows? Because it has been happening for so many years, it is a routine part and it is expected. And if the county is gonna pull a service, I feel that the highway department needs to send out an official notification to those residents letting them know that they are no longer going to do that. Just simply stopping and not telling anybody, I don't think is doing a service to the people that pay taxes and pay for all this service.
Well, at this moment, I guess our direction two weeks ago was to stay out of this area completely by the commission until further notice or until, at least, well, it was a two-week direction. I guess today is two weeks from now. So, I guess we need direction, like I asked earlier, at some point, direction from the commission when we find out that direction. I'm not sure on notice if that'll come from the highway department, from the commission, or if this is just public notice at this public meeting. I'm not sure of that at this point.
One of the benefits of having a dialogue like this is to understand the foundation for making a decision. And I don't think we're ready to do that specifically. But we've shared a lot of information. We're gonna take one more comment, and then we're gonna close this down. But I would suggest that we have touched enough points here today, including the fact that whether you have a homeowners association or a road district, you have a government. That is a form of government. And it's a good place to learn how to function. Otherwise, you can move in another direction and let someone else run the government so you don't have to. But anyway, sir, go ahead.
My name is Chris Hargans. Once again, I live on Aurora Drive. One of our last homeowners meetings we'd had, or somewhere along the line, we met with a representative of Doyle Estes and Hanny Safney. And their advice at the time was to fix the roads, we needed to form a road district, which many of us there felt they were just passing the buck because we knew what happened with the lawsuit regarding Avenue A and the first contractor with it, and they'd had a settlement, and none of that money meant. So, many of us left that meeting a little discouraged. I can only appreciate what you do in your road district. I mean, it's a lot of work, so good, very good job. Regarding snow removal, the snow, currently, our property is on the city exchange map with Pennington County. I mean, it's county property, but the county's plowing red rocks and the house is out there. And I feel like we're just being pushed while the county's saying, well, they don't meet our standards, even though multiple layers of government have agreed to the construction of these roads. Bonds have been refunded to Hanny and Doyle regarding their construction. And, you know, that's where we went to when they said at the meeting, well, former road district is kind of a slap in the face because multiple layers of government have agreed to how these roads were built. So, I would, and in bad faith or good faith, I think the county is right to, you know, they make a loop to leave their plows down. But what I see on my road is Rapid City picking their plows up in the street sweeper and turning around at the intersection of Hanson... their plows up in the street sweeper and turning around at the intersection of Hanson and Aurora Drive and heading back up and then dropping their stuff down. Now, in the past, I, living on Aurora, I don't feel that snow removal had been a big issue. It'd been on the map, and we'd call, and it was maintained. And even per the city maintenance snow removal guidelines that they publish on the Internet, it's an arterial lane, it's on a school route, and it's on a steep gradient. It meets all the criteria for the city to maintain Aurora Drive, plus they have an agreement with the county about swapping maintenance. I feel like this is just being pushed off into another meeting when the city has agreed with the county to swap roads. One of these two entities need to be responsible for maintaining it. Now going out towards fixing these problems? I would have no issue becoming a member of the city if I actually seen it done. The city reaches agreements with the state on construction of an interchange, and then the city then agrees to responsibility from then on. You know, if the city would come out and say, hey, you sign this conditional, you know, agreement that you become cities, members of the city after we've maintained this road, I'd agree to that. But currently, like I said, to see the plow or the street sweeper come down and pick up their stuff and go right back up the hill and drop it again, leaving those roads, you know, I'm very frustrated at where we are because, like I said, regarding snow removal, this is on the street exchange map. The city needs to maintain it by their own criteria, and if we're not going to have the city maintaining it, then I don't think the county should be maintaining red rocks.
Thank you.
I have exact figures for you here. If the property was annexed into Rapid City, they would pay .617 more in property taxes, which would be 61 cents per thou, per thousand of value. So for a $100,000 house, that would be, for every $100,000, that would be $61 a year more. If they had to continue to maintain the valley sewer levy, that's .494, depending upon what the agreement is with the valley sewer. Valley fire would probably go away, library on our road, and county fire. And that's for 13, pay 14 exact levies.
Thank you, Julie. Okay. Any comments by the Commission?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have one, and it's not brilliant and it's not original, but the problem still remains that the county is trying to deal with cities in the county that aren't cities. There are just a bunch of people living together, and we're trying to do something with laws that were passed in the 1880s and 90s, and we can't do it. We don't have the equipment to do it. And maybe, you know, maybe we need to go to the legislature and get something done, but I don't know what they do in Sioux Falls because they just keep growing and growing and growing. I guess they just keep annexing. I don't know. But I, and I don't know if you go to the legislature, what law you want, but I, I think that's the problem is we just, we're dealing with 100-year, 120-year-old laws, and it's tough to, to do, get the things done that we might want to get done.
Okay, we...
Before you close this, if I could make one more comment.
Sure. Go ahead.
You know, I, I really think that for, for the people in Big Sky and Valley Ridge, long range, they, they, they would be well-served to voluntary annex to the city because then they're going to have a tax, a bigger tax base to help support them to keep their roads, to get them fixed now and to maintain them in the future. I know Valley Ridge says that their roads are in pretty good shape, but as the gentleman indicated with what they're receiving in unorganized road money right now, it would take about 40 years to be able to accumulate enough money to repair those roads when they start deteriorating. So long range, you're better off to go out there and get yourself voluntarily annexed to the city. It's minimal, as, as the auditor indicated, $61.70 per 100,000 in valuation of your house. So depending on what your value of your property is, it's not a huge dollar amount to get that kind of service. The county has, had taken a position years ago in these developments not to, not to bring them on the county road, road system, just because there's so many of them out there, and, and with the money that we have coming in to support the County Highway Department, maintaining the, our existing roads is a bigger need than what we have dollars to, to fix the, the current roads that we already have. So that, I mean, if anybody walks away from this saying, what should we do? Nobody really said what we should do. I'm telling you, you should get out there and send petitions around and annex. I'd encourage the city to put something in writing to these people, tell them specifically what you're going to do if they get annexed. So when they go around there, they can say, here's a letter from the city. Maybe you can even get the mayor to sign it, that says, here's, we're going to fix these roads. We're going to, we're going to maintain these roads. These are the things that we're going to do for you if you annex into the city.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, can I see a show of hands of the people here that are involved in this today? Now can I see a show of hands of the people be willing to be annexed into the city to solve this problem? Surely more than 30%. Thank you.
And the other thing I think that needs to be in your letter, Terry, is the misconception of if we get brought into the city, our taxes are going to double. Well, evidently, according to Julie, they're going to go up some. And I would sure indicate that, yeah, some kind of figures, and I know it's, there's a lot of variables in there, that your taxes may go up a little, but it'll be worth it. And that's up to you to determine what, what it'll be worth it or not.
Okay, I hope we will be able to benefit from people giving thoughtful direction to this thing, and I would urge you to realize that all leadership does not necessarily come from the government. You folks have the capacity yourselves to apply leadership to this situation. The county will continue to be associated with this in order to best govern the actions of the county. And I think you can take what has been said here today, various points that suggest ways to move forward. And I have a saying, I don't know where I got it, whether I thought of it myself or not, but whatever government does to you or for you, it will be done with your money. And so your situation is what it is, and I hope we can find it possible to solve some of the problems and move forward. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Well said.
Someone needs to make a motion to take a...
Take five minutes.
Five minutes. Motion second to take a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So I mean, is the county going to talk to the city about, hey, this is on the exchange map? And this is what...
What is that? The, I, the agreement.
Do, do we need a motion?
Okay, we'll proceed with item 16. Buildings and grounds facility project staff report. Thank you.
Mike Cool, Construction Project Manager. I have some handouts I'd like to give the Commissioners.
The only handout I want is the government's handout in my pocket.
I can't help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was asked to come and give the Commission a, an update on where we stand with meeting needs that the county has. And I think I'll, to start out, I'll give you a, maybe a brief history of where we've come from with our projects to date. In 2009, we started on our facilities master plan. In 2010, we completed that, and at the end of 2010, we bonded for construction projects to, to meet our facility needs. 2011, we started on a parking structure addition. In 2012, we completed that addition, and we also, then in 2012, we also started the new campus expansion onto Block 99. In 2013, we completed the evidence building. And something I'd like to mention along, associate with, along with this development work that we've done, we coordinated the, the reconstruction of Kansas City Street along with our projects, as we will be coordinating the reconstruction of First and Second Street now that our projects are complete with the city. And then this year, this fall, we completed this building that we're in now. From the original facilities master plan that was completed back in 2010, the only project that hasn't been addressed that was a recommendation within that, that completed report is the work on the courthouse. I'd also like to give you my brief, in my words, understanding of the, the building committee's goals and how we move forward with projects. The, the committee has tried to be very flexible in its approach to selecting what projects should be completed. An example of that might be our, our support of moving the Health and Human Services project up on the list when we were trying to work with Community Health on their project. Unfortunately, that project did not continue forward. Another goal is to try and limit the number of projects we're trying to execute at one time in terms of these big projects so that we can focus on those and make certain that we have the funding in place to, to cover the cost of those. Another goal is that we want to carefully set and maintain our budgets for these projects. And finally, the, the building committee's approach to these projects in terms of design is, is, is really a conservative approach. The desire is to, to get quality facilities that can last the test of time, are easy to maintain, but they aren't overdesigned. But we, and as part of that, we want to consider the long-term needs that are based on the information that we have available at the time, and this contributes to a flexible design that helps us meet those long-term needs. I put together a few slides in PowerPoint to facilitate some discussion about this, and I'll run through those right now. Kind of wanted to give you a rundown of, to show you how, how we've addressed some of the needs so far that were recognized through the facilities master plan. The best way that I could think of doing that was basically by departments or agencies. So what I've done is, this list is, essentially came from some early documentation that was produced during the facilities master plan project. So the next couple, three slides are where we stand with a number of meeting our needs for departments or agencies. On this particular one, you can see that the majority of these were met with this particular facility, this administration building. We've also addressed our campus parking needs with a parking structure addition. But these items below that are areas where we may not completely understand the needs there, but there has been a need identified in the facilities master plan at that time associated with these, these departments. Some of these are subcategories of the departments. And then this one, this slide essentially shows the different needs that the Sheriff's Department has. We've met some of those already. We are making progress on, on some of the others, like the administrative offices. For them right now, we currently are remodeling the fourth floor, the, the Public Safety Building to address their needs as far as those administrative offices. Wanted to give you a rundown of where we stand as far as available funding. The remaining bonding, bond money that's left right now is about $3.3 million. Our anticipated expenditures that remain in terms of these, mainly this Block 99 project, this is based off of my end-of-year supplemental requests, which is about $870,000. Majority of that, after the meeting today, probably this week, I'll be authorizing release of much of that money after a building committee meeting today. So the balance of, after that, that, those expenditures will have about $2.4 million of bond money left. Then in accumulated billing funds, undesignated money that's available, at the end of this year, it's estimated that will have three point, about almost $3.5 million. Then, according to, with the budgeting done this year for 2015, we'll be adding $709,000 to that. I'll point out that it's intended that, that, that money continue to be shifted over into that fund ongoing until we meet our facility needs. So we'd have four point, about almost $4.2 million with that. Then there is also our remaining courthouse remodel reserve that was specifically designated for some of the work that we're doing over in the courthouse. We're currently utilizing some of that money to, to address some courthouse projects that are needed just to, as we moved our departments out of there, we are now remodeling some of those vacated areas to meet court functions right now. They're really relatively limited in scope. It's, most of it's more about finish, fit and finish rather than any major changes to the building. So there's about $6.7 million available for projects in 2015. Something I didn't add on there is that in terms of, when we get, go on to the next slide here for projects, the Highway Department probably has some funding available for a project out there as well, and that affects how the committee decides what projects they want to move forward, or would like to recommend move forward.
Mr. Chair? So Mike, your $709,000, that includes money coming in as the payback from the city?
It, it does, and I don't know if Julie's in here or not, but yes, that's, that's correct. My discussions with her is that that does include that, that approximately $300,000 that will be coming into, that will be coming from the city to repay their portion of these projects.
Right, and, and I just want to make that clear. I think it's important, there isn't a lot of public left here, but hopefully some I think it's important, there isn't a lot of public left here, but hopefully somebody will watch this. The important thing about that is that we did those collaborative construction projects, and we used our bonding money, but the city is paying us back. And so we will have, I mean, it will be a benefit to us to have some of that coming back so that we can do our future projects.
I thought our levy, I thought the levy was the $709,000, but that's not, that includes the payback.
The levy is set based on taking the $300,000 out of it, and then it's, then it's set to adjust, to make up the difference. So if the city were to pay off their portion of it, which I don't think that they, there's any advantage to them paying it off early anyway, but if they were, there would have to be some decisions about how that money would be utilized, if that would be, just go into accumulated building, I would assume so, to be utilized for projects.
We have a motion on record that that is what happens with that money.
Okay.
The other thing is, just so I understand it, the $6.7 million that you're showing here does not include anything from the Highway Department. And I think at our last conversation with Tom, he had indicated he thought they had $2 million.
That's correct.
That they could put towards that. So actually, you'd have about $8.7 million that you could use for projects. Now, and may not all be spent in 2015, but at least they could be applied towards projects that you could actually get started on in 15. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
The last slide here I have, then, is just our list of projects that we currently have. As I indicated previously, these are, these are kind of, are flexible, and we shift them around depending on, Health and Human Services would be an example of that. That one got moved up to the top for a short amount of time because of the potential of leveraging, going in with another entity to help defray some of the costs of a new facility. Since that project hasn't fallen, kind of fell through, now that one's shifted back down, a little bit lower in the standing. But Highway Office would be an example of one that maybe rises to the top because of their available funding for that one. In terms of the money available right now in structuring projects, basically like as they are, probably, my thought is, we could probably get down, and through 2015, we could probably get down through number five, addressing needs. So going forward, we'd be relying on that 700, reoccurring $709,000 going into the accumulated building and addressing projects from there on.
And I think the other long-term funding that could come into play would be, as we start paying off bonds, as we pay bonds off on some of the projects that we bonded, then that money could be diverted into cumulative buildings so that the county could continue with, long-range, continue with addressing its building needs. And frankly, by the time you got to number nine, there could be some other needs that have bubbled to the top then that need to be added to that. But this could be a long-range, long-range focus on where we need to do, what we need to do with buildings. And as Mike Peterson has pointed out in some of our meetings, we need to continue to put money in that cumulative building as well for some of the major repairs that need to take place on buildings as they get older.
That's correct. And I'd also like to point out that this list says, doesn't include everything, as I was scrolling through those initial slides, this doesn't necessarily encompass all of the projects that may be required. There are other items on that list that we haven't really identified, had much discussion about what a potential project might be there. But those, as we get a little bit farther down the road here, as you're pointing out that we come to understand a little bit better the needs justified that we need to do something with that, that's, additional projects listed.
One of the projects you forgot on completing in the last year was the New Underwood Highway Shop.
Oh, that's correct.
You got that on there. I mean, that, again, that just shows the progress that you and staff have been making with addressing some of these pretty serious needs that we had. Now, that New Underwood shop was in pretty tough shape.
And these are, the focus of this list was in terms of what money we're spending specifically bond or accumulated building fund money on, that we've been looking at. Some of these other money, projects that are, and we have numerous ones ongoing, like the Public Safety Building remodel, a fourth floor, and there'll be additional remodels to that building going forward, that are coming from different funding sources that we're moving forward with as well. So those are, that one is being handled through the Sheriff's Offices, covering the costs of that, those particular ones, but.
And the bottom line is, you need to keep the building committee going for long-term, to continue to keep the, keep focused on these projects.
Yes. The desire is to maintain our building committee, keep it moving forward. I'd like to have some continuity in terms of moving projects forward that, if we are losing Don, so it would be nice to, if we had another commissioner on the committee that's somewhat aware of the projects and the needs that the county has, that we could continue on, continue to make progress.
We could let him function as a volunteer and then recognize him every month.
Yeah, that would be good.
On the consent calendar, so.
We could even let him call in by phone or something if he's out vacation.
Warm weather.
I'm all for that. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just think that, I just think, Mike, and Mike, the amazing work that you do for our buildings and all the hard work for this last couple of years have, I just want to thank you personally. You amaze me on how hard you work. I mean, we get, building committee gets emails from Mike, and it's always eight o'clock at night from his office. I just want to say thank you again, it really is appreciated.
Thank you.
I need to ask what the history of the building committee is. Was it formed officially by an act of the commission, or how did it come about?
Yes, in general, I believe it was formed by an act of the commission. I don't know that all the current committee members were designated on there initially, but I don't know that for certain, I guess, have been designated by the commission. But it was formed by the commission.
All I can say is, since I've been a commissioner, and Don, you have a lot more experience, there just has been a building committee. Gosh.
Well, it's my, it's always been my understanding that the commission has approved those people to be on the building committee. And it's been done in a board meeting. And I'm on there because the chairman assigned me to it. I was on there as sheriff at the direction of the commission. And so I think it's been a commission action. I don't know that there was actually a motion that said we're having, we're forming a building committee, but the commission is the one that's laid that out.
Over the last 30 years, there's been building committees on and off, and basically they've been assigned by the commission when there's relatively large projects involved. Even in past, when there's money that was capable of being spent for maintenance projects, if you want to say that, it was also put together, a building committee, to see that that was spent correctly. But they've always been done by the commission. Sorry.
So we get donuts.
From some previous experience I've had, having a, an official committee and having an official priority list are sort of like stabilizers in terms of the function of government. And if we do not have a formal process, I would recommend that we set one up. Ollie, can you comment on that or not? Are we viewed now as having an official policy or?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, the commissioners appoint by motion every year for building committee, but I don't know that we have any formation documents or any specific positions assigned to it. That'd be really easy to put together.
And then something that gives stability to the priority list, I think is important. Are you comfortable with moving in that direction?
I think so. Because what, what happens is, if you don't have a building committee that, that there are some commissioners on, I noticed when I came on as commissioner, it kind of, you know, you guys wanted to do maintenance, but because nobody had really been committed as commissioners to keeping track with you, then when you had to replace a roof, it was kind of a hassle. But if we knew as commissioners, and we're part of that decision-making and planning for the future, I just think it makes it easier, and we do maintain our buildings better if we do that.
Agreed. I think it's been a real advantage to have two commissioners on the committee. It has been a real benefit.
Anything further, Mike?
I do not. If I can answer any questions, I will.
I think we all endorse Commissioner Troutman's remarks about you, you two Mikes.
I don't require any kind of a motion or anything, I'm just for your information.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item is item 17, proposed wage study.
Good morning, Nick Stroud, HR Director and Chairman of the Compensation Committee. What we're here today to do is to continue the discussion and hopefully start the process of a wage study. At the direction of the County Commission, the Compensation Committee met on December 9th, and we reached, at the end of that meeting, we reached a unanimous vote to recommend Condry and Associates as the firm for the Pennington County Wage Study. We did this after some discussion. We, I divided up the references. We were able to check 13 references between the two companies. And there were, there were some differences that we found, that we, as a group, had a good discussion, and at the end of it, we felt that Condry and Associates was the appropriate one to recommend. A few highlights of that is, we wanted to let the commission know that most of the references that we got on both of the companies were positive. There was a lot of, you can tell that both Condry and Associates and Seagull Waters do this, I mean, that's their business, and they're, they're good at it. We just found a different perceived value with Condry and Associates through checking of references and through the careful reading of these two RFPs. A couple of things that we wanted to highlight was the flexibility that the references pointed to in Condry and Associates. Seagull Waters is a very big firm, they're very efficient, and I'm sure they're very good at what they do. But with that size comes a lot of processes that they're very happy with, and they don't really like any deviation from their set process. One of the references we called was the city of Knoxville, Tennessee, and they do a lot of wage studies. And they said Seagull Waters had a good product, but they were very inflexible. And so when suggestions from the city were presented, they were met with a lot of resistance. They were met with a lot of, this is how we do it, this is how it's done, this is what you, you know, this is what you bought when you bought us as a consultant. So that was one thing that, when we were checking with Condry, there was a lot of flexibility, there was a lot of interaction, there was a lot of back and forth with the, with the entity, the public entity, and with the consultant. Another, another piece that was big in our discussion was the amount of buy-in that Condry attempted to create. And the way they did that is, both companies would fly in and meet with the county commissioners, meet with the department heads, meet with the elected officials. But that's where Seagull Waters stopped, where Condry and Associates, their goal is to meet with at least 50% of all the employees, and to attempt to talk to the people who do the job, and to create that buy-in from all levels. And that really, I guess, struck a chord with us as a committee, that we appreciated the amount of buy-in that Condry attempted to create with their wage study. It is, I mean, you're going to have to meet with the county commission, you're going to have to meet with the department heads and the elected officials, that's, that's the basis for this, but it's going out to the people who actually do the jobs. And then Jessica and I had a conference call with Steve Condry. We had some concerns about how that process worked when they meet with individuals, and what they do with any differences between what a department head views a position as performing, and when a, when an employee might have a different view. And so they put our concerns to rest through the processes that they do. They bring in subject matter experts, which Kevin, Tom, our sheriff, and Stephanie over in the sheriff's office really appreciate it. It's not just one person who's expected to understand each individual job, but they bring in six or seven different subject matter experts. And one might, for example, be familiar with corrections and law enforcement. So that person would be specifically assigned to meeting with those people, and they have that background and that history to understand what their view of a correction officer does, what Kevin and the administration thinks a correction officer does. And then when they talk to the correctional officers, as an example, they'll have that background and that subject matter expert career that they're building to know the questions asked, know when maybe a person is inflating their job duties a little bit, because as humans, we tend to think we maybe are a little more important than we actually are. And so they have some mechanisms in place to make sure that the understanding between the consultant, the leadership group, and the people that are in the position all understand, are on the same page as far as what the duties of a position are. So, and then the third thing was, was the follow-up. Seagull Waters was prepared to offer us a functional database, which we were really excited about. It was a manipulated database, it can be either an Excel or Access, where we own that, and we can continue to update this process year after year. And that, that was good, and we were really impressed with that. The thing that Condry did that we, we really liked was that they offer a year's worth of follow-up afterwards. They actually offer an appeal process. If someone, any member of our side of the project doesn't like where they're placed, then they can appeal, and it's gone through a process where they show the, specifically for that position, how they arrived at their recommendation. And then they also give us a year's worth of free follow-up, any questions we have, any person that's actually in a position that we're not comfortable with, and we maybe need some recommendations on where to move them individually, or if we're going to create a new position, which we do from time to time, they can help us with that. And so that is really the summation of our meeting. And so I, and I think there's a few others here, I know Kevin's out of town, and Stephanie's here to represent him, but we're, we'll stand for questions.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, I'm a member of the Compensation Committee. I didn't vote on this, or it wouldn't have been unanimous. A couple things, and nothing wrong with either one of these firms, I think they're both can do the job. What we failed to, so far, to say is, Condry claims to do more work, and obviously, everyone liked what he did more. Of course, you have to realize it's seven and a half percent more money, too. So he's getting paid for doing that extra work. But the other thing that is subjective, that I'm not sure about, is I think a few people, department heads, have already worked with Condry before, and that gave them a certain amount of confidence in him. Sometimes I'm not sure that's a good thing. Maybe it's too familiar, I don't know. But, you know, I, I have a hunch Condrion's gonna get it and he'll pull out all the work he did for the city of Rapid City and we'll get that regurgitated and so.
Any other questions or comments?
So Ron, if you were making the final decision on this independent by yourself, you would go with the other?
No, I'd probably go with Condrion just because I, I think that the department heads have more confidence in them and that's gonna mean a little bit. I just brought up the other point that, you know, sometimes familiarity breeds contempt and sometimes it breeds higher wages.
And I, and that, and there is a familiarity. They, they did do the city of Rapid City. And I think one of the things that is going to be important for the commission, myself, the rest of the department heads, is in this study, when they come that first time, you have to really be honest with them and with yourself on what type of employer you want to be. If, and where we wanna fall within the Rapid City pay market. If we wanna lead the market, if we wanna be always at the top, we have to let them know that. If that's not a goal of ours, if, if we have to accept that we might not ever pay on a whole as much as the city, if that's a decision we wanna make, I think it's up to us to be honest with that. They promised us, well, in the RFP, there's three proposals they give. One is just a straight market proposal. This is what the market says. The other one can be adjusted to meet our goals. And so I don't know if that was ever done before when we, I know we didn't do it. There were multiple, I pulled out the 2010 study we had them do on the elected officials. And in that smaller group, he provided two different proposals. One based just strictly on the numbers. Another one was based on pulling them off of the scale. And so there was some options given. But I think that if, if we have a vision of where we want to be as far as either leading the market, being right in the middle, or even being somewhat lagging in the market, as long as we're honest with ourselves and honest with him, hopefully whichever group we go with, they will understand those goals and can give us at least one proposal where it's adjusted to be where we want to be on the scale.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've never heard that quite put that way before. So in other words, we're not gonna really have a study. We're gonna do like you do if you get buying a house and you need an appraiser, appraisal. Where do you need, where do you need the players to be? High, low, where do you want it? Isn't he gonna give us the facts?
Absolutely. That's will be the first one. The first one is the facts. This is what the numbers say. This is exactly what in, using the house term, the market dictates. However, if we have different goals than that, if we are upfront with those, then you can adjust that because we're not going to lead the market. We don't want to. I don't think, at least my understanding with this commission and with the department head group, it was never our intent to try to lead the market. So when you're talking about salary ranges, you're gonna talk about a, a number, a wide range of salaries, a start, midpoint, and then, and a top end. And that is going to be the recommended steps. Where we place our people, how we implement that, those can all be adjusted based on our, obviously our funds available is the most important thing. And identifying the key pieces, one of the things we might say is we as a goal say any job that falls twenty cent, twenty percent below the recommendation, we wanna put to the top of our priority. Anyone that's right where it needs to be, we're not going to adjust at all. Even ones that are lagging five percent, they're, maybe we accept that that's not going to be adjusted. But, so those are decisions that we have to make as a leadership group in conjunction with the, whichever firm we choose, to let them know our goals.
And also it looks like in this proposal, they'll give the county three options on implementation. Three, three scenarios on here's how you can implement it, whether it's implement it all in one, one action or, or.
That's what I guess, yeah. One of the options might be we agree anything twenty-five percent below. We, there's a number that's decided. Those are the high priority ones. Those are done right away. And maybe that's all we do. That, I mean, that could be all we do. And then, or we could do it over a couple of years. The ones that are twenty-five percent below the first year, fifteen percent below, five, you know. So there's, depending on what the numbers come back, we're going to have some options as far as implementation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is what I was showing my concern for last time is that we needed the goals. So Condrion will step us through setting those goals.
Absolutely. It's gonna be the commission, the department heads and the elected officials and to create buy-in or hopefully create buy-in.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We can spend another hour talking about this and there's a lot of people out here that have things down, down the line. I think we all know where it's gonna go. So if you'd say something.
Something.
So my, my motion is that we proceed with the contract with Condrion Associates to do the wage study for Pennington County and fix the chairman's signature to that contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd have to say is that I don't know how they're gonna find the money to pay those additional wage scales that they're gonna be, come back to the recommendation. So this might just be a waste of money. But you got it done, you can put it, we can find somebody to enter it into a computer and we can do our own thing about adding to it down the road a little ways to keep it up to date. I think it'd be a good, a good deal. So, but finding the money, that's up to you guys now.
Maybe we'll start a.
Just don't raise my taxes.
We'll start a homeowners association.
Five dollars a month.
Okay, we have a.
But the, but the schools would miss out on seventy percent of it then.
We have a motion and a second. Any further remarks? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next item is item eighteen.
I'm Don Carey. I live at seventy-eight oh four Alberta Drive. And I've had a request to get a variance so for a second road exit, entrance out of my property. The road has been built.
Cancelled.
Since about ninety, two thousand nine, two thousand nine. That, at that time, I requested to see the planning department whether I needed a building permit and was informed, no, I did not. So I put the road in. Now they're saying, yes, I need a building permit and I infringed on the easement for county line. I, I'm requesting a variance for this road as, I don't know how you show it.
Which one you want?
Huh? It won't show.
Okay.
Okay.
You can work off, can you work off of this one?
Well, that, this is the, survey map that I received when I bought the property. And the road runs, the other picture. That, this would shows, you can see where the driveway comes out and ties into the road that goes to the athletic center before entering onto Alberta. I had permission from the person at the athletic center to, to put the road in that way. In fact, it.
Permission from whom? I missed that.
The person that owns the athletic center.
Okay.
I know his first name is Robbie. I don't know his last name. And so I put it in and now they're telling me that, no, I violated several requirements. To do what the road department requested will create a, a second problem of water runoff from the road coming from the athletic center that washes down into here. My driveway there blocks that. And I've put drains in that diverts the water that comes into the driveway down into the drainage ditch along. Along there, you can see where there's that row of trees and the ditch between that and the road. So I just need a variance for that to make it legal. It's a very low, low usage road, both my driveway and the one to the athletic center. And between my home and Corral Road, there are six other driveways that are similar to this. In fact, two of them have three, three roads going in and one onto Sheridan Lake. On Highway forty-four, there's three more. One of them has three and goes, it merged together close to Highway forty-four and then enter forty-four. But all three of them are very similar to what I have. And so I, I request a variance to make this legal and have it recorded. That's, I guess that's about all I, I have. Oh, there, one other item was the fees for this variance. I've asked for a waiver on those since I built the road thinking I was doing it by the law. And I guess somebody at the planning department didn't know the law or didn't do his job.
Staff's already talked to Mr. Carey about the proposed shed that he applied for and he won't be able to construct that where he'd want that at the end of that road in the, in the section line. An approach and what he has done are permitted, are allowed uses in a section line with approval and the proper permits.
Yeah.
Those are the two things we don't have. He doesn't have.
Okay, so if we approve the approach, then that's one step in getting his shed approved?
He would not be able to put the shed where he wants it, where the current, where the picture shows an RV because that would be a structure inside a section line setback and can't do that.
Can't do that regardless?
Not in the thirty-three feet of the section line, no.
There's no waivers on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, so where does that shed have to go or where are you gonna put the shed?
Well, pretty much right where that is, but towards the house, right up against the wall.
So it'll be, it'll be in compliance. You're gonna move, you're gonna move the shed to?
Well, there's nothing there at this time.
Oh, I see.
That is, that's an RV that has later been sold. And the, but I want to put the, what I want to put is one of these portable type, tent type sheds that I can park my car in to keep the weather off it and the hail. That's, that was my request and that was my hope.
BJ, would that, can he do that over there and be?
He'd have to be outside the thirty-three foot for the section line. The thirty-three, it'd have, it's closer to the house. Most of the construction that you're looking at as far as the driveway and the RV are with, in thirty-three feet. He'd have to be closer to the house. Now he's actually in the twenty-five foot setback for his zoning district. So he would need a setback variance for that requirement.
And, and so then he's gonna have to move his driveway. He'll have to extend the driveway down if he wants to drive a car in it.
Yes, and we had talked about that previously and from what I understood, it was unwilling to do that because of the way that the parking section of the driveway was constructed.
Well, if to do that, I don't see any way that I can do it without just completely ruining the front yard because of the steepness of the banks. This little retaining wall that's towards the house.
So if we're not gonna, if you're not gonna be able to put the shed in, if you're not gonna be able to put that portable building in, why do you need the driveway?
The driveway's already there.
But you're not gonna use it if you don't.
Well, I do use it, but limited. But when it was built, then I had a, a very good need for it. I needed an RV parking. And to remove the section of the driveway is, well.
But you, you understand you're not gonna be able to put that, that building in there or that structure in there even if we approve this driveway? You understand that? You're not gonna be able to put it in there?
Well, that's what they tell me, yes. You know, what I really don't understand, I'm not bothering anybody else's property. I'm not blocking any roads. I'm not creating any obscene things for neighbors.
But here's what I think, I don't understand. I think it's what Don is saying. Why would you want that driveway to continue when it won't get you to where your new building is?
Well, like I said right at the start, to remove the driveway connection to the other road creates a water drainage problem for my property that I solved by putting the road in. And at the time I put the road, I need it. That wall blocks the flow off and if you see that there is a kind of a ditch right at the end where the water washes down.
But you're gonna pay money to get the entrance where you could just leave that wall and deal with your drainage that way if that's what you want to do. But why are you wanting to, I mean, you're asking for us to waive those fees, but I don't see why we would waive those fees if we're, if, if you're asking us to put an entrance into your property that you're not gonna use.
Well, I do use it. I just, it isn't a great, big use. And if I had the shed up there, then it would be used on a more regular basis. I just happen to have a collectible car that I cannot park outside. You know, and when I, when I put the driveway in, it was put in with my thought that it was being put in legally.
Yeah.
And I, I want the property, it's a long-range thought, I hope, that I will never sell the place, but my children will. And I don't want them to have to go through what I've gone through for the last couple of months trying to make this property legal.
So you're gonna abandon your idea, you're gonna abandon the idea of putting another building on this lot?
Well, I don't want to. No, I still, I still would like to put that where I could park a car up there.
Where at?
Where that motorhome is.
And that's not gonna happen?
Right.
Evidently not. I don't know.
Well, the gentleman right next to you says it's not gonna happen.
He says I can't do it, but he says it can be done if you authorized it.
Oh, really?
You just can't put a structure there. You can't put a shed there. You can have, if they would approve this second approach and you got the proper permits for what's constructed in the section line, you made those requests and if those were approved, that would be okay. A structure in the section line setback would not be allowed. So a shed over your collectible car.
Would not be allowed.
Would not be allowed.
Yeah, that's what I keep, I think we keep saying.
You can still park it there. It wouldn't be protected by a shed.
Mr. Chair.
If you got all the permit.
Yes.
BJ, can, is there room on the bottom side of the house here to, to put that shed that he's talking about?
There is room. Mr. Carey and I went back and forth about different areas on the lot to put the shed in.
There's not a septic tank or drain field or anything like that that can near that?
We believe the sep, we believe the drain field is on the south side of the driveway according to the site plans that we have. Unless you've come up with a new location to put the shed, since we last talked, we couldn't find a feasible location or he was unwilling to relocate some things in the backyard to make it possible.
There's, close to the driveway, that is a garage. It only has access from the backyards where you can see the concrete pad. That is a garage. And so you have to come in there. If I, because of the slope of the land, to move a shed in there, I would have to excavate. I would probably have to drop towards the, the driveway. I would probably have to drop the land to have a level area. to have a level area by at least four feet. Or raise the, the other side, side towards the house. And then it would block me from ever using the back garage. It could be put on the other side of the house at the cost of about thirty thousand dollars.
On the south side?
Pardon?
On the south side?
Yes. Well, I don't have the thirty thousand dollars to put into it. And I've already put quite a bit of money into just making a driveway and making it look decent. PJ?
Yes, sir.
He can't build a building.
Correct.
But he wants the driveway to go to the building. So if you can't build a building, why are we doing with the driveway?
Yeah, that's-
The driveway's already there. And I know it's already there, but I'm trying to, so, but what good is the driveway other than a water block if you, if you can't build a building? Well, I guess my thought is, what good is it to tear it out now that it's already there if it's gonna cause other problems? Now, that's what I'm trying to find out. Whether it's gonna cause other problems or not. And I do- What good, what good is it be if it's there without a building to go to? Well, I do use it as a parking occasionally, still. But- Is parking authorized in the section line right away?
He's all right. He's have to get, everything there would have to be permitted and allowed before that would even occur.
And so we're talking, not only talking about thirty-three foot setback, we're talking about another twenty-five on top of that, am I correct?
Correct, fifty-eight from the section line.
Fifty-eight feet from the center line.
I'm sorry?
Can that be varied, the twenty-five foot?
Twenty-five can be adjusted to thirty-three.
Yeah. So, so if he's, right now in the thirty-three foot, if you would move it out of there, we could vary then the twenty-five foot?
Which is the lot size variance we talked about earlier, yes. Uh, the setback variance, excuse me.
Required coming toward the house?
More.
More than it is now.
Right. For the shed.
For the shed, yeah.
The concern, and if, I'll explain this. If we were to put the shed on the north side of the house, currently he uses his front yard as access around the back. If you can see the cement slab on the northeast corner of the house, there's a little shop there that he gains access to. And putting a shed there would block his truck access on the north side of the house. So unless you were willing to.
Which one's more important?
Okay with that.
Yeah, probably would.
To do what?
Well, the discussion that we had about putting the shed on the north side, you said it would obstruct your access to the shop with your pickup truck.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So is that shed on the backside of the house, is it legal or do we need to do a variance on that as well?
It's a separate issue. That's, it's within the easement. And according to the survey document that Mr. Carey produced, it's, the surveyor Hanson shows it one foot from the property line. It's also inside the six-foot utility, monodraing utility easement and the five-foot required setback by our zoning ordinance.
So there'd have to be a variance on that?
There would, but the agenda was for the second approach today.
I know, but that's the next thing on this.
Is, there's other things, since that survey document was given to our office and we spoke, I spoke with Mr. Carey about it, it's, other concerns have come up as well. And he was unaware of them the time he purchased his property.
Well, just, I, I'm just struggling a little bit with, we approve this, but then disapprove the other things.
Yeah.
And we're up in the air. We're not doing anything, so.
Well, now, the, the section garage, that had a building permit and everything on that at the time it was constructed, right?
Oh, the garage attachment, yes.
The back garage?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay.
And that showed that that would be fifty-eight feet from the section line according to the site plan.
Which one, point to it on your little map.
Real quick, sorry, Don. He's talking about this, right? Why is that not writing now? Well.
Thing needs work.
The, where you see the concrete slab right there, yeah. That, that's the, had been added to the original house. There's the mark on, he's got his pointer pointing to it up there.
All right there?
Yep.
And that's the garage we're talking about?
When it was permitted, the site plan showed it to be fifty-eight feet out. The two thousand and four survey shows it to be fifty-four point five feet from the section line, so it does encroach in a setback.
What about that stuff right behind the house?
Cement slabs, we do not regulate.
Those are just cement slabs?
Uh, yep. Further down to the south though, there is that, on the southeast corner, there's the shed that it does not require, did not require a building permit because it doesn't exceed a hundred and forty-four square feet and it's not on a permanent foundation. However, it does encroach inside, into the section line, uh, into the setback, according to the survey, by one foot.
I'm not sure I'm interpreting the photographs correctly, but it appears to me that the, the road to the athletic complex is not in the center of the section line.
Correct.
Is that allowed on the basis of some kind of a variance or an easement? Or what's, what's the status of that?
There is, staff's done research into that. There was a request in March twenty-seventh of two thousand and one by Scott Anderson, at that time the Pennington County Director, requesting, on behalf of applicant, requesting construction of that road. We have yet to find the approval for that construction. Staff is still looking for that.
So if you grant deviation from a section line and you build the road to county specifications with the thirty-three feet from the center to the right of way, does the right of way move with the road? And if so, does that in fact change the relationship of his property to the right of way?
You can move section lines. You'd have to get a permit for that, get, have it approved, and I believe it definitely would affect the setbacks.
So if that road was approved, off center at least in the section line, thirty-three feet from the middle of the road to his property would be the right of way, wouldn't it?
Thirty-three feet from, right now the section line is his northern property line. And if we were to adjust that section line further north, again, we're going off of a Rapid Map map and assuming that the section line appears where it's supposed to be. It would adjust a lot of things. Might give him more room to do what he wants. If it went further, if the section line was to move further north, if I believe that's what you're suggesting.
It, it just looked to me like there might be some room for figuring this out.
In, in that eastern section of that road, yes, and then the road dips down a little bit further south and then again north into the parking lot for the rec center.
PJ, cannot the road be built anyplace within the sixty-six foot right of way of a section line?
Can a road? Yes, a road can.
And how wide is that?
With a construction in a section line right of way permit.
But the road, well, supposedly the road has a construction permit somewhere. So how wide is that road?
Uh, top of my head, I do not know. I can see, look in the document from two thousand and one. Twenty-four foot wide with four to one in slope and back slope and two point five foot deep ditches.
We got about twenty-two feet to work with right or left.
It's a bigger process.
And from what I'm seeing here, the, right there with the edge of that camper, that RV or whatever it is that pictures, that's right on the section line?
The camper on the section line? No, the section line's further north than that.
Just a little bit though.
I gotta put on my look figures.
Just a little bit, yep. Let me pull up Rapid Map for you.
Can't be much about looks on the map.
Let me pull up Rapid Map for you. Everything disappeared.
It's not.
Well, that's weird.
Road doesn't go down the center of the section. If you want it done and done right, we'll get a lady to do it.
That's the error, PJ. That's why it's not working.
Yeah, but I could see on that side for this one.
As quotes, right of way. But looks of this is right on the section.
I don't know if that's the section line or?
Do you understand what they're saying?
Right of way here. Not completely. I, uh-
Okay. They're seeing if this, if you move the section line up a little bit or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
As the road goes. But you're saying this is the center of the section line?
No, the se, the section line center is that red line right there.
But that's not my property.
It's your, it's your northern property line. It is, according to that survey that you gave us. That's, that's your northern property line.
Cause it curves here and then that even brings it more into where he was parked. Cause it starts to curve there. See, it's, it's curving around and up. And his, it would start to curve there.
Okay, we got it up here in a second.
Ooh, this isn't a very good. It, it could right here make some difference, but it's curving down there and that's where he's parked.
Is that blue line?
So do you, so the, see the, find the RV just above that, the solid red line is what Rapid Map shows as the property line. The actual property, northern property line for the property is the hashed or dotted red line, which is the section line nor, further north of the RV.
Say that again?
Well, that's-
Okay, so Rapid Map, if you, I'll back out a little bit. Okay. So this line right here is what Rapid Map shows as the section line center. Rapid Map also shows that this is his property line circled in red. According to the survey that we have from Hanson in two thousand and four, the section line is actually his north property line. So this property line, which is normal on Rapid Map, is off and should be up here. So all of his property lines move north.
So the way we're showing-
Is in his?
It doesn't really matter because we're not talking about his property line, we're talking about the section line.
Right, right.
So what-
Doesn't really affect much.
So what we're talking about up there right now? The road is shifted north of the section line?
The road was built north, yep.
So is that on somebody else's property onto the north out of the section line?
Does it affect here?
No, it doesn't. I'm not asking about affecting this, but are we gonna run into another one down the road somewhere? When, if this is over on somebody else's property?
Possible.
So how much room does he have from where the ATV is now to the house? Did you have room enough to get it out of the setback?
To get what out of the setback?
The building that he wants to build.
He has enough room from the house, yes, he does. He has enough room. He just need a-
And so this is an open-ended building, correct? Pardon?
Were you gonna have it where you could pass through?
Is this just a, just, just a shed or just a cover? Yeah, just a tent-type shed. So there's, it's open on both ends. No, it'll be closed on both ends.
And we addressed that. I was thinking he could do that and pass through it to get around to his shop.
It'll have doors. So you can drive through both ends? I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I haven't bought one. And so I've just looked at them and priced some of them. And the one I came up with, definitely you can go in and I'm not sure whether it was doored on both ends or a solid cover on the one end. Well, it looks to me like the way we're sitting right now, sir, is that you're gonna have to make up, when you make up your mind which one you wanna use the worst. You wanna use the one behind the house the worst? Or do you wanna use the new one that you're planning on putting in on the north side of the house? Well, I won't put one in there in the, between the house and that driveway. That section line? Yes, in the driveway. I won't put one in there.
Right here?
Because it blocks too much of my yard and access. So then really we're spending a lot of time not getting anywhere. Well, that's what it sounds like.
Okay.
But I, I still-
So if we don't approve this driveway for him, does he have to tear that out then?
Unless he was-
Abandon it?
The main thing is to approve the approach because I don't think the driveway exists without the approach, but-
But if we don't approve the approach, does he have to do anything or just abandon it?
It's construction within section line. He would need a permit to have the driveway in there if the-
But if we don't approve it and he, and he, and he just says, I'm not gonna use that driveway anymore, what, does he have to do anything out there?
Struggling with that one.
I, yeah.
Yeah, I would check with the state attorney of highway on that one.
What do you think?
The highway expert's coming.
How about a mark?
Okay, the setbacks and all that has nothing to do with highway department. I guess we were asked to look into this a few weeks ago by the planning and zoning. I wanted to know if we had an issue with the second approach there. I guess I went out and met with Mr. Carey and PJ here and said the highway department does not have the authority to approve the second approach. That's in ordinance fourteen, which reads, only one approach per residence will be allowed. Approaches to general, commercial, highway service, general or limited agriculture districts, large tracks or parcels of land will be per South Dakota codified law thirty-one twenty-four three through thirty-one twenty-four seven, which has nothing to do with the residential areas, the codified law. As we have talked in the past, the commission does have the authority to grant a second approach or make changes to ordinance fourteen.
All we're trying to figure out is, because we, we've already determined he can't put a building there. So it's whether or not we keep the driveway. And it's gonna cost him, what, two hundred and fifty bucks for the driveway?
For the permit?
Permit?
Believe so, yes.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars. Is it worth the two hundred and fifty dollars to park a car up there in the open? And, and if he, if he says no to that and we don't approve this, then what's he have to do? Does he, can he just abandon it? Can he not do any, not spend any more money? Just leave it like it is and say, okay, it's not a driveway anymore?
He can plant grouse on it.
The area where the RV is, there is a chain link fence there as well. I mean, technically it's construction in a section line right of way which requires approval.
Even for the chain link fence?
Chain link fence under eight feet, you do not. No, just, it's not just a driveway that we're leaving is what I was trying to get across.
So he needs a permit for the chain link fence?
No, he just needs, no, I was just adding the chain link fence. It's just not a driveway and landscape rocks, blocks. There's more there than what you can see here.
I'm just trying to figure out whether we're, whether we should just say, no, we're not gonna do the driveway and move on because he's not gonna get to do anything but park a car in the sun up there.
Right.
And frankly, you can, you can, you can, you can park cars out on your front lawn without a driveway approach temporarily. And so I would think if he had a whole bunch of company come over and he could say, well, go up and drive in my, cross my green rocks that I've painted green up here for grass and, and park up there for a little while. We don't have to, he doesn't have to pay two fifty and he doesn't have to do anything out there and we quit talking about this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd make a motion to deny the act, the second access to this property.
Okay, um- Second?
I have to second, PJ.
We have a motion and a second.
The motion was to do what now, Ken?
To deny the second access to this property.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I have further. If you deny that access, what has to be done to, to, to it?
I don't think you have to do anything. At least, that's what I, that's what I was asking these gentlemen. I don't think you have to do anything.
So I can still use it? Or somebody else can use it?
See, that's, that's why you can't just leave it.
Let the grass grow in over it. Let the grass grow in. Now it's no longer driveway. It's grassy part of your lawn. If you wanna drive on your lawn, you can drive on it.
Yeah, you would be feeding the whole...
Would highway require the approach be taken out?
Instructed it without a permit. You make them dig it out.
Not to disagree with anyone here, but I think the Highway Department would, would prefer that the gravel be removed at where it abuts the road there. But we, we are not gonna say that you couldn't drive through that right of way to access the gravel that's, uh, by retaining.
Well, I have a question for the Highway.
Yes.
Will you come in and fix it to where the water from the other road does not come down and wash all this dirt and gravel down onto my property that I have to clean up?
I'm just gonna get your picture up.
I'm talking about right along...
Put on Don.
It's not our responsibility.
All this water comes down, and you can see where it's washed out here. Well, before the road was here, it used to wash right down here onto the property. And I got gravel from here, gravel from there, rocks from here down on the property. Now, if I tear this out, I'm gonna have the same problem again. So I would request that you put a drainage down so the water goes down and into the ditch.
Is it a private road?
Pardon?
Which, i- is that a county road that goes up?
No, it, it's a section line road that was built by the, the Athletic Club and, and the tennis court up, up above to the east there. So it is a non-county maintained road. Therefore, we cannot go in there and, and do the drainage that Mr. Carey's asking about. You know, in, in the section line or in the right of way along Albert Drive, Alberta Drive, yes, we can, we can work there. But not up above where, where, where you're asking, Don.
But you've, you've already told me that that's a public road. That one going to the Athletic Center is a public road. Now, if that's a public road, then shouldn't the county have to take care of keeping it from damage and other property?
No, it, what makes it a public road is because it's on a, on a section line, which makes it a public, public road. And, and in the Commission meeting earlier today, we talked about a lot of public roads out in Rapid Valley that are not maintained by the county.
Mr. Chair, I think we're getting in way over our head here with things that we don't need to go that far. And I see no reason for him to tear that out of there. There's no reason why he can't just throw grass seed in and let it, let it grow back up and leave it there to stop his flooding problem. And I think that's a simple solution for everybody, us and the individual, and Don, so...
Would that be a solution if I decided to sell the property? Would, would trying to sell it run into the same thing again, that it's not a legal road?
Mr. Carey, to some extent, this is, is, is part of the responsibility of homeownership. We, as a government entity, can't fix a situation when a homeowner buys. And, and your neighbor that built the road up to the Athletic Club, I, I mean, you almost need to visit with them because they're the ones who created the drainage issue for you. And, and we can't solve that part for you.
I am gonna ask that the comments be directed to the motion that's on the floor. And that is to, the motion is to deny the request. Anything further relative to the motion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Buscree?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
What we're saying, they've disapproved it?
Correct.
Okay, now what takes place now?
I'll talk to you after the meeting if you can hang out for a little while.
Okay.
That'd be okay?
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item 19.
Hello, I'm Ethel Witcher, James's wife. I'm coming behalf of him.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I hope mine's a lot simpler. Is it PJ? What we are up against is we sold our place in Shannon County, and we wanna move a single wide trailer house from Shannon County to Pennington County for a hired man. And I guess us not understanding the length that all this would take and deadlines and so on, we need to get it moved like the end of December. And I guess according to planning and zoning, that that's, we need a special consideration from you to let us proceed with this.
That's correct. We're looking to move a, it would have been a ranch hand residence and a single wide trailer onto the property. However, there are no other structures on this property to this time. The environmental planner and the water protection coordinator have already been out to the property to look at a profile hall, and there don't appear to be any issues. Basically, they didn't meet the deadline on time, and they're looking to get the building there as soon as possible. That's where we are.
What do they have to get to proceed?
It's a CUP. They've already applied for it, and they're waiting to be heard on January 12th from the Planning Commission. At this time, staff's looked at the property, looked at their request. Doesn't appear to be any issues with it being approved.
I'd make a motion to allow the individual to move the mobile home onto the property, but not hook it up until the CUP's approved.
Do we have a second?
I, I couldn't. So you're saying, can I get clarification on what you said? Because I missed the last little part.
Well, that'll, my, my motion was just to allow them to move the mobile home onto the property, but not hook it up to any...
Okay.
Till it's approved. And then that way, they can get it off the current property they have to move.
No, we need it hooked up.
That's good.
We gotta see if it gets seconded first.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Well, that's...
I'm not so sure they can't do that without our permission, can they?
Hook it up?
No, move it on there.
We've allowed them to move on to the property without hooking up in the past, as long as it was in 90 days. We do, we do not allow them to hook it up. That is what she is, I believe, gonna request right now.
Yes, our issue is, we cannot move the mobile home until we can hook it up because our hired man is living in it. So...
So how soon, I mean...
Well, we would like to do it by the end of December.
But you can get your septic system and everything in by that time?
Yes, we've done the perk tests, and I, I know I don't understand everything, but yes, he will work on it this week. I've got all my paperwork in, I guess, and paid for. I guess the way I understood it was that it was okay to proceed with the sewer system, right?
I was just checking with Brittany, and she hasn't been, not sure, she hasn't seen the most up to date. We're not sure if the system can be done by the time you wanna move it on to the property and have the ranch hand living in it.
Yeah, I tell you, I really, truly, I am totally lost with this. I...
Can, Mr. Chair?
Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. I've been on the site. I haven't been in contact with the installer. He just not, has not submitted the actual application for the septic system. So we're just waiting for that application. That typically takes a day or two to review to get the okay to put it in. So that's what I'm waiting for from Santi.
Okay.
Okay.
So it could be then, you think, moved on if he got it into you?
Yes, if he could get it in and reviewed. We've already done all of the fieldwork for it. So it's just a matter of the review of it. So, and it depends on, I guess, when, how long it takes him to get it actually installed.
Okay, Mr. Chair, PJ, I've got a question for you. I don't like to override the Planning Commission or step ahead of the Planning Commission, but sometimes it's a necessity. And not too long ago, we gave a conditional use permit to some people to do, I think, about basically the same thing.
Correct.
So this is another one of those extensionary circumstances. And so I would withdraw my original motion and make a new motion to allow them to hook it up and proceed with the permitting process.
Do you have a second?
Did you get a second on that?
Not yet.
I'll second it, so...
So, so we're just approving the conditional use permit then? Is that what we're doing?
Essentially, prior to it being heard, before the Planning Commission.
So they, then she never has to go to the Planning Commission?
No, it's still gonna go through for...
Is that just...
Because there'd be research involved, and the staff report and everything like that will be developed. They've already applied for it.
If she goes through the Planning Commission with it, and they deny it, she can appeal it, and it'll come to the County Commission. We've already made the decision.
Unless there's other reasons.
And staff has looked into this. It doesn't appear to be any reason why it would be.
Wrong.
Right, right.
You've talked to all the neighbors?
Have I? I believe I have, all the neighbors.
The only other neighbor's another Witcher.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
So we can just proceed?
Okay. Item 20. It says this item will be removed per landowner's request.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
PJ, why is this being asked to be held over? I mean, it's not a sure thing just because they asked them.
I'm not sure. I believe Holly was in contact with the person, with the landowner. And it was, all I basically know is there was their request to remove it from the agenda.
Cory's here.
There you go.
Thanks for your service, Ken, Don. Sorry, it's your last day. I basically am, I asked PJ for a report, and it's not here yet so that I can, I'm just gathering more information, and I'm, I'm just not ready.
Did Jay get the information that we needed to make a decision through you guys?
Jay did submit something, however, I did not include it in the packet.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. I drafted a definition of transfer that includes allowing spouses to transfer between one another. But my understanding, the request is to not have that on the agenda at this time.
Yeah, but just, and I'm not saying that it's a bad thing or a good thing, but just because somebody asked not to have something on the agenda, that's up to the chairman and the County Commission, whether to put it on the agenda or not. So I don't know why we didn't get your information, even though maybe we're not going to act on it.
Well, that was my mistake, then. That was my decision. I didn't put it in. We didn't think we were ready to do anything with it.
Well, if we had the information from Jay, that's exactly what we asked for.
Mr. Chair, I, however this all came to where it is, I, I think it's fine to continue it. And I don't know how long we would continue it. I'm willing to make a motion for that. But I'm not sure what length of time would you like to...
Just next, just the next meeting is, when is the next meeting? It's what?
January 6.
Okay.
You know, you're gonna have new commissioners and stuff. Would you wanna wait maybe until the second one so everybody has a chance to get...
And the second one is the 20th. I will be gone on the 20th.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to continue the item until January 6.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. Carried. Okay, item 21. Now 10:30.
One second here. Gotta get reorganized.
We need a motion to go into a Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to convene this Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, what you have before you is variance 1429 to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to nine feet in a general agricultural district. The applicant is Bill Baker, with the owner Clayton and Francis Baker, Surveyor FMG Incorporated. Mr. Bill Baker and FMG representative are in the audience today if you have any questions. Existing land use is a sawmill and residential property. On the current lot is a commercial sawmill operation, several outbuildings related to the commercial operation, two single-family residents with onsite wastewater systems, and a cell tower that has an approved building permit and conditional use permit last reviewed in December of last year. Basically, what has caused this issue is this property was surveyed four times since 1880. And in 1988, a survey was done to recover the original position of the actual lot line to the west. There was some concern between the owners and the Forest Service to the west of a section of the property line where a building exists, which is right here. And so they had decided through a plat, which was approved in 1991, to create this little bump out on their property line to allow for about a half acre more of land on the property. This structure, which is the one that's in question, which you have actually a close-up of in your packet, was put on the property in around 2003. So this is also related to a lot size variance, which will be coming up shortly, next, and also a layout plat that was approved through the Planning Commission just recently with 19 conditions. There appears to be no specific circumstances or conditions or exceptional narrowness which warrant support of this variance request. Approval does not request, grant any extra allowable uses on the property. Strict application would require a 25-foot setback from the property line. The owner has the option to either obtain more land from the Forest Service and replat again to remove the structure entirely, or to move it out of the required setback, or to, yep, so that, or to apply for this variance request, which he has done. Granting the proposed variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest as it has existed for some time, and the Planning Department has no complaints on file. If the County Board of Adjustment approves variance 1429, staff recommends no conditions of approval.
Good chair, and that's my motion to approve the nine-foot setback variance with no conditions.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How does this relate, then, to the next variance that we're doing on that same property?
Because he's, they're looking to replat the property, and they're gonna do a lot size variance because the lots are gonna be smaller than the 40 acres.
And, and, but we wouldn't need, but if we get to this one and we say, "No, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna, we're not gonna give you that variance."
It, it won't affect the one that is now, we have a motion for. Because the parent parcel, the 42 acres, would still exist, and they would still need setback variance regardless of what you would do with the next.
For that one, for that one spot.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item B.
Item B, variance 1428 to reduce the minimum required lot size, 40 acres to 17.5 acres, 3.1 acres, 3.3 acres, and 15.6 acres. 3.1 acres, 3.3 acres, and 15.6 acres in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Bill Baker, the owner Clayton &amp; Francis Baker with the Surveyor FMG Incorporated. Current existing land use is sawmill, commercial, and residential. Basically, they're looking to create out of a 42.33 acre parent parcel, Propose Lot 1, which would be 17.5 acres, Propose Lot 2, which would be 3.1 acres, Propose Lot 3, which would be 3.3 acres, and Propose Lot 4, which would be 15.6 acres. And there's also be some proposed right-of-way, about 2.83 acres, which was involved in the layout plat, which you may hear later. On Propose Lot 1, there would be a commercial sawmill operation and several outbuildings related to the operation. On Lot 2 would be a single-family residence with some detached buildings and an onsite wastewater treatment system. On Propose Lot 3 would be a single-family residence and detached building. It has an approved onsite wastewater system. And Propose Lot 4, which is currently vacant and may be subdivided in the future by the applicant. The applicant is also, through the layout plat, as indicated, that they would do a 66-foot wide platted right-of-way and also 110-foot turnaround right here. So, this is the proposed right-of-way, if you follow the cursor, coming off of here.
Okay.
And on December 8th, as I said earlier, the Planning Commission recommend, did approve, recommends approval of Layout Plat 1432 with 19 conditions. The surrounding zoning within one mile of this, of this parcel, of this property, hold on, whoops, sorry, my fault. There are general agriculture district zoning lots which range in size from 551 acres to .5 acres. The applicant does have the option to rezone to low-density residential, and there is, there are three subdivisions within the area that are low-density residential, and they, those lots range in size from 14.3 acres to the minimum requirement of three acres. But the applicant has asked, wants to retain the general agriculture zoning classification and hence the zoning, the lot size variance request.
But if he went through the, the rezone and got it zoned as low-density residential, then, then there would be issues with all this setback and, and size and all that kinda stuff.
There would be no issue with size.
Size.
Correct.
He's gonna have, is he gonna have issues with setbacks when he gets ready to build the buildings on those lots?
Setbacks remain the same in low-density residential and in general agriculture district. A sawmill is not an allowable use, however, in low-density residential.
Okay, any other questions?
If the County Board of Adjustment approves variance 1428, staff recommends no conditions of approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So, you're not making any recommendations? And frankly, it looks like the appropriate, if you're, if you're, if we think that there's any organization at all in zoning, that it would go to low-density residential because that's what he's doing, right?
Correct. There is precedence that this has been permitted before.
I know there's been precedence, but if we, if we wanna start being organized, if we wanna kinda have any kind of consistency, then, then it should be going to low-density residential?
Mr. Chair, can I ask Jay a question? You know, we've been working on this ag taxification, classification, and there is a proposal from the state, and will that affect this if he, I mean, the four lots wouldn't, but if he wants to divide Lot 4 into two more or whatever, wouldn't that take him over what the state is proposing as a five-lot limit?
Yeah, I think it would. I mean, he's, he's got four now.
Yeah.
So, yeah. He would, he would have, with the proposed language, he would have difficulty...
Yeah.
Well, he wouldn't be able to have ag on any of those other lots.
I, what I'm discussing with him, we've been working on a proposal from the LRC and the Ag Taxification Committee that, and, and what the state is proposing is that if a piece of property is subdivided into five or more lots, then they lose their ag tax classification. And so, I'm a little concerned. I, I mean, this is just proposed, and we don't know that it's going to go through in this legislature, but it, when we take this action today, I feel like it should be the owner's knowledge that this, there could be something happening in PEAR this year that would limit what you do with your fourth lot, and you would only have, I mean, you could lose your ag classification if you divide Lot 4 into another lot.
And, and those, dividing that too, they'd be under the proposed 20 acre.
Yes.
So, there's additional conditions that you'd have to meet, including the income and so forth. So, you could kick yourself out entirely, or if you didn't exceed the five, you'd at least have, if the proposed language got adopted by the legislature, you'd have additional criteria you'd have to meet because you're under 20 acres per parcel.
And I, I just, I don't, would not feel right if you didn't know that that was something being considered in PEAR that could happen, and it changes maybe what your plans are.
Well, but even if he's, even if he's, irregardless of that, none of those lots would meet the criteria if we get an ag status anyway, will they? If we do, if we...
He can divide the whole thing, and, and he, at this point, has 42 acres.
I see.
It's just that he's subdividing the property.
But, so if we rezone it, then it takes that away from it?
Correct.
I think, my impression is that we're mixing metaphors a little bit in terms of zoning classification and...
Taxation.
Taxation or equalization. And they stand alone in that respect.
They do.
So, I, I personally can't see any, any reason that this planning would, would have a bearing on, on taxation in and of itself.
At, at this point, but they mentioned that what they would maybe do in the future is divide Lot 4, and that's what I was focusing on because the way the proposal is now for PEAR, it would make a difference. They, to maintain their general ag tax, or their ag taxification, classification, they could not divide the Lot 4 again. You could only have four lots there. And, I mean, you, you know, I guess that's...
Mr. Chair, I think this is where I got myself in trouble because I don't believe that you're gonna start subdividing all these lots down to, one, one down to three acres and another one down to, what is it, less than, or two or less, and, and then still want ag classification for taxes. That's dead wrong. That's not what ag is all about.
Well, that isn't the, I'm, I'm just saying, they need to be aware of that because they're running through their four lots now.
We, we have a, an issue in front of us dealing with zoning itself, and we need to dispose of it one way or another.
PJ, do you know why the property owner doesn't wanna make this low-density residential?
Not exactly, but the, the owner is in the audience today, and they could probably tell you. I know there's a lot of backstory to this.
That would be the normal progression, it looks to me like, when you look at this little map you got, what, if they're gonna put houses and stuff in there, the normal progression would be low-density residential.
Correct. Then, does not allow sawmill operation, however, on that one lot.
It would not allow it?
Correct. You could do low-density on 3, 2, and 4, and an ag on 1.
Go ahead.
I guess...
Identify yourself, please.
Bill Baker. And how this all came about is settling my father, who passed away his estate. And honestly, we don't really plan on, you know, subdividing Lot 4 is probably not a issue for me. I, I wouldn't do that. I don't care about that. We're simply trying to settle an estate. My far the biggest concern of ours would be the sawmill, and so, we need that ag status for that. And this is how this all came about, I guess.
So, in settling the estate, you're subdividing over there so you can give people who were heirs to the estate their, their little chunk of the ground?
Correct.
I have a, I have a question, PJ. So, sawmill is not allowed on, on low-density residential, I take it? I don't imagine.
Correct. It's not in the list of...
But can we zone a business out of, out of business? I don't think we can, can we?
I don't know the answer to that.
I just can't believe that we could do that, but... Of course, if it's voluntary, maybe, maybe again. Okay.
Is there anything that the zoning board, Planning and Zoning Commission focused on in, in this regard?
And they would not have seen the variances. They would only saw the layout plat. I was not at that meeting. Brittany presented for me. I don't believe there was any questions. It looked like, from the minutes that I read, it went through without any problem, the layout plat.
Okay, what's your wish?
Mr. Chair?
I said, you're making this complicated.
I don't particularly like this, but I don't think with this situation that we have a lot of other things to do about moving from general ag.
What was that?
I said, I said, I don't think we've got a lot that we can do about it because I think the sawmill has to stay in the general ag zoning district, and if we don't, if we force him into going with a low-density residential zoning deal, then we're gonna force him out of business. And like I said, I'm with Ron. I don't think you can do that, then maybe legally we can, but morally, I don't think it's right. So, if somebody would say something, I'll, I'll solve this problem.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say that the reference to the surrounding zoning within one-mile radius of the subject property, the general ag zoning applies to 551 acres down to a half an acre.
Yep.
And my question would be, what major public impact would we be having by demanding that this not be zoned ag? Yes.
I can't answer that question. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the variance as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We need a motion to come out of...
A move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda, excuse me, to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Second reading of Rezone 1411, Lowry Tuber, Renter &amp; Associates, and approval is recommended. Planning unit, planned unit development review 0204, Deerfield Park condominiums. Request is to continue to the January 20th Board of Commission meeting. And item E, planned unit development review 0604 for Cheyenne River Ranchets. Approval is recommended.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning?
Staff has a...
I, do we have a second? But I think we need to ask if anyone wishes anything removed from the consent calendar before we move forward. Does anyone wish to do that?
Staff does.
Not, is there an...
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to remove item E for a quick correction, and since items A and B for Baker went through, like to add item F to the consent calendar.
Okay. Do we have a motion to make those changes?
Okay.
Wow.
I guess we don't need a motion, do we? Just to approve the consent agenda as amended? That sound right?
I don't think it's very clean to add to the consent calendar myself.
Oh, okay. We've done it before. That's why I was just checking.
Just turn a slide one by a little...
No, we've done it before. I was just checking. That's fine. Then, just, staff would like to remove item E.
Now, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with item E removed.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Just a minute, please. Our previous motion, did that go into the minutes?
Of what?
Ron and I made a minute ago.
No, because it wasn't seconded.
Yes, it was. We had a motion and a second.
Oh, I missed the second then.
So, my thoughts, we'd have to make a motion. I'll withdraw my motion. Now, I'll take care of that one, and then you can, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay.
We get confused.
Okay, we got that straight now.
I think so.
And we do have a motion and a second on the consent agenda? Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Item E is a planned unit development review 0604 for Cheyenne River Ranchets. Approval was recommended by the Planning Commission on December 8th with 21 conditions. However, there are only 20. Number 13 was left out, and that, the correction is that it be approved with 20 conditions. 20.
And that they be renumbered?
They'll be renumbered.
That's my motion. Okay, we have a motion to that effect? Do you need it restated?
No.
Jay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F. Yeah.
Yep. Item F is a layout plat 1432 to create lots 1 through 4 of BTP subdivision. Applicant and agent are Bill Baker, owner Clayton &amp; Francis Baker with the Surveyor FMG Incorporated. The parcel, parent parcel is 42.33 acres, and there's sawmill and residential operation on the property. Recently, very recently, the County Board of Commissioners has approved a setback variance for a structure too close to a property line and also lot size variance for the proposed four lots. Again, to remind you, the proposed lot, proposed Lot 1 would be 14 point, or 17.5 acres. Proposed Lot 2, 3.1 acres. Proposed Lot 3, 3.3 acres. Proposed Lot 4, 15.6 acres, and the right-of-way, about 2.83 acres. There is also a cell tower operation on the property, again, which was just recently, or was reviewed by staff in December of last year. The main part of this is that it was put through the interdepartmental review, and the biggest concern that came back is actually from the city GIS department. They are doing the addressing now for us while staff is out on maternity leave, and this was apparently an area that has a lot of buildings, and some of the addressing may have been misplaced or not in the proper... have been misplaced or not in the proper location, and they had said this is a prime opportunity for all the addressing issues to be addressed. And in the nineteen conditions that were added to the layout plat, which was a recommended approval by the planning commission, that was included as a condition of approval. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve layout plat fourteen thirty-two for Clayton and Francis Baker, Bill Baker, agent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports.
Mr. Chair, I think you probably all got a copy like this in your mailbox, and I was just bringing it up, I was invited to this yesterday morning, and the Norm McKee family is in the process of donating a million dollars of their own money to a program that will be made down on top of the ridge above the Missouri River at Chamberlain, and it has to do with a forty-five-foot-tall statue of an American Indian woman wrapped in a star quilt, and the name of it will be designated to dignity. Mr. McKee's been working on this for quite some time, it's his own money putting into it. The governor was there and made the announcement, and accepted in behalf of South Dakota. Dale Lampier, Lampier will be the designer and constructor-sculptor, and Pat Wiss is landscape architect in the project. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think I have anything, thank you.
Staff report? Committee report?
Well, I, just to let you know, I, since the last commission meeting, we had a detox advisory board meeting. They seem to have some good programs going. They've moved the women's treatment program out to the Adams Street, or out to the juvenile services center. I went out and toured that. It's, looks like a pretty good move for them. And we also had a JDAI meeting, kind of give us an update on how the juvenile detention alternative initiatives, initiative is going in Penning County, and, and, and the progress that they're making on taking that statewide. So our numbers, our detention numbers at JSC were down to an average daily population of about thirty, thirty-one for the year, which is very significant. If you look back, a number of years ago, we were running a hundred kids out there in that facility, so that's pretty, pretty significant. And then the, the, had a short compact meeting where the sheriff went over expenses, they're, they're running a little short in detention dollars on estimated revenues, so there's gonna be an additional assessment coming out for you, the people that use that facility on housing for this year. Other than that, I didn't have any.
Into the era.
Yeah.
Two things, I want to remind folks that the Black Hills Commission, County Commission group is meeting tomorrow at Lace Brothers in Hermosa. And, and I guess, for me, the, the concern I have is on Forge. There's some issues there, so I think it'd be good to have a good representation from us. Secondly, we've been working on the egg tax, egg classification tax law. The state, through LRC and the Egg Task Force, came back with some pretty significant changes. Jay is getting, he's gonna be on a conference call, he's been assigned to a committee to work through some of that, the changes on that, and so he, he'll be doing that this afternoon, and I'm curious to see how it goes. Some of them are good, and some of them are not good, and created more ambiguity, so. And then, Mountain Pine Beetle, that, funding is gonna be very iffy this year, and we've been working on presentations, and that'll be moving forward, trying to, we, we've got good support, it's just that it's gonna be hard for them to find money to help us out, so. That's it.
Okay. This isn't a committee report, but I think this might be the time to present it. Janet Saylor, our treasurer, did a synopsis letter, I think you maybe each have one, relative to the tax certificate sale that was conducted, and she did a nice comparison between two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and it's significant that four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four delinquent cards plus thirty, thirty-five supplemental cards for a total of five thousand twenty-nine that were sent out in November, on November fifth, and there were, then on the sale, there were a thousand and twenty certificates offered for sale, that was yesterday, in the amount of two million seventy-three thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. Of those, three hundred and eighty-two sold for a total of one million seven hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and one cent. This leaves three hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents worth of real estate taxes that remain to be collected in December of sixteenth of twenty fourteen. And looking at the other numbers from previous years, the numbers kind of fall in line on a comparative basis, and in terms of numbers and numbers sold versus uncollected. We thank Janet Saylor for that report, and our items for the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission? If not, we do need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, do we have a motion to come out of the executive session?
So move.
Due to lack of a second.
Nancy does.
Oh, I'll second.
I'm sorry. Okay, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The rest of them vote no, apparently.
I didn't hear the motion. Oh, to come out of executive.
We're all saying aye.
Got it.
Okay, do we have any other motions?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the follow, or approve the merit raises for the following department heads for January merits. Danny Gordon, LeAnn Holland's head, Mike Peterson, Nick Strut, and Scott Goffey.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One no. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. You can second. Actually, we should let Don in.
Probably. Are you, are you going to Algarve Task Force?
Most of the field.
I'm gonna try to. I, I've got building committee right now, so.
Do we need a roll call vote on adjournment?
No, we're good. I'm, I'm saying aye.
This is four bucks.
Well, Don, it's been a pleasure. We're glad about.
Motion carried.
I'm a management. And I think you're right most of the time, so.